Good afternoon. We're back from recess. And we left off, we're still in the Committee of the Whole on Resolution 291-36COR. Senator Blas, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. And because of my limited time, I'm going to have to dispense of the niceties and the formalities and get right to the questions, okay? So first off, understanding that why we were initially set in a state of emergency, okay, and we've been in this state of emergency for all over two years. Can somebody please explain to me why we are still in the, why we are in this current state of emergency?
Madam Speaker, may I be the first to try to approach that?
Please proceed. Yes, please.
Senator, as stated in previous testimony provided to the legislature, has been stated here today, in terms of my purview as the incident commander, the reason that we're staying in the public health emergency is because it is, it is separate from the restrictions. The Public Health Emergency and the Emergency Health Powers Act are tools that are utilized in order to meet, meet the needs, meet the needs and requirements that's primarily determined by the pandemic overall and the virus. Now, what we're seeing right now is a current slowing of the virus, but the truth is, we don't know if in some of the areas where COVID hasn't hit, if there could be a mutation as we've seen. We went through this iteration before when we were downsizing and looking to come out of this earlier than, than as early as possible. Actually, two iterations of this. First, with the presentation and plan around Operation Liberate Guam, which would have put us at an end retrospectively, it would have put us at an end around July and August at the latest. Then Delta hit, and then we had plans going through Delta to be done by December, and then Omicron hit. So ultimately, the virus and the challenges that the particular variant puts to our community is the dictating factor. So why does the Public Health Emergency need to continue is because the Emergency Health Powers Act, the tool the PHE provides for us to meet the needs. Now, even with the Public Health Emergency enacted, and it's, it's on the record and it's out there, we have seen gradual reductions in both restrictions and a scale down of operations, all to bring us back to a steady state, which is again, in reverse to the ramp-up that we had to do. Mind you, was not a quick process whatsoever, and, and that's the biggest concern, is that should the need arise in the current situation, not having that tool available is, is problematic to the overall operations. And keep in mind, yes, this resolution is before us, but I myself, it, the, the emergency is not over. I still have nearly 30,000 boosters to put out to those that may want, that are eligible, and those are our manumku, right? I still have monoclonal antibody therapies that I need to put out. I still have those that are in underserved communities who have not been reached out to yet or had, had not had the opportunity that we're reaching out to, which is a painstaking process, and those are all ongoing. What we see and what the public generally sees is that in, in most respects, things are in many ways back to normal, right? People go around their daily lives, and as more restrictions get lifted, they see that pre-pandemic living that they're used to. But what they're not seeing is all the work that continues in the background, and, and that's critical, and that's, that's why from my seat as the incident commander, the Public Health Emergency needs to continue until we've transitioned our operations completely down to public health, being able to take care of it like any other virus. And we are not the only jurisdiction, as all the other jurisdictions are figuring out how to treat COVID-19 as quote unquote endemic, because COVID-19, under, unlike other viruses, is still easily transmitted for the asymptomatic. COVID-19, unlike other viruses that we have seen, don't show obvious signs that make it easy to detect, right? And so that's why we have to take all of these factors into consideration and have an operational plan around it. Now, I can't speak to all the financing and all the other pieces to it, but for my piece, the operational piece and the way forward in properly transitioning this to a steady state, organically to public health, meaning public health without the use of overtime, without the aid of federal resources, to include personnel as well as funding, is able to manage this into the future. That is the ultimate goal, and that exists regardless of whether or not there's a public health emergency. However, if we end the public health emergency at this time before that transition is completed, it will have detrimental effects to the services that we provide to the community.
Thank you, but I'm still not convinced as far as what the, I'm still a little confused with what you mean by detrimental effect. There's, whether or not you're in a public health emergency or not, you'll still be able to provide the services, am I correct?
No, we are still required to do our best to provide the services. Now, to what, how effective that is going to be, that is, is at this point in time largely dependent on whether the, the Public Health Emergency exists or not. And I have examples, if you would like, Senator.
Sure.
All right, one example has been previously mentioned in, in a few questions are the EMTs and the authority that the Emergency Health Powers Act adds, right, and allows for EMTs to include the medics from the National Guard to be able to perform vaccinations. If that is lifted, the only ones that can do vaccinations are LPNs, RNs, and doctors. And I will tell you right now, we don't have enough on the island to be able to manage the current numbers that are coming in for vaccinations. We have seen an uptick. The manumku who desire to get their fourth shot are coming out, and even at that, we know we have to go out to them in certain instances for them to be able to avail to it, especially forthcoming with the senior citizens opening up, which can, which can create a situation and an opportunity for us to provide this booster to those, to the highest risk individuals into our community. So if the Public Health Emergency were to end, that manpower resource that has, has developed, that provided well over, well over 100,000 vaccines with our community is not going to be available. And so we're going to have nurses, the few that we have, and the vacancies that remain unfilled, that responsibility is still going to fall on public health to, to manage, but I'll tell you right now, the, you know, the convenience, the ease, the accessibility that the community is used to is just not going to be there anymore.
Okay, that's interesting, because you know, then it gets to me, my question is more specifically to you and to everybody else. Okay, so then what is that magic number? You know, when do we get to that utopia, so that you are comfortable that the state of emergency can be lifted?
So, like I said, my, my position and my goal, I previously stated and put on the record, is to transition us into a steady state, to transition public health into a way that's manageable. I've already expressed the timeline, and my operational timeline is June. That's based on numerous factors. That's what my data tells me, and that's what I'm working towards, right? That's not advice to the governor, that's just my responsibility and where I'm at. Now, whether the Public Health Emergency is going to come to an end at that point is not my discretion or purview to, to be able to decide on at that point, right? It's just to get us into a position so that when that decision is made, that the situation and the data and then information that supports that decision is all laid out for, for the governor ultimately to make.
Thank you, Senator. Mr. San Augustine, as the incident commander and the Public Health Emergency, I'd like to hear your take.
Yeah, Senator Blas, actually, it's Mr. Fernando Esteviz of the incident commander.
Oh, wait a minute. By, by law, it's the Public Health Director. When did that, when did that change? When did we change the law?
You know, the incident commander is Mr. Esteviz. I'm the Public Health Authority, but he's the IC.
So what role do you play in this whole thing?
As the Director of Public Health.
What does the law say?
That I was designated by the governor to be the Public Health Authority.
But doesn't the law say Public Health Director?
It says, the, the law actually in the Public Health Emergency Powers Act allows the governor to actually designate someone else other than the Public Health Director. However, in this response, Senator, I am the designated PHA. But we do have an incident command prior to me, prior to.
So we've decided we're going to interpret the law to be able to say one thing when the law is basically clear. It says the Public Health Director is the, is the individual in charge of the, of the emergency.
Well, I, I still remain as PHA, but Fernando is the.
Okay, so based on that, what is your take on this whole thing? Why are we in this current state of emergency?
I'm sorry?
Or why are we still in this current state of emergency?
Well, it's not just why we, it's actually the nation is still in this state of public health emergency.
You're just jumping the question, but I'm not talking about the local, because I will get to the federal part.
Right, right, but I am, I am, I'm, I'm trying to jump your question there, Senator. But with regards to, if you look at our data, and it is very impressive in terms of those that have been vaccinated, but when you talk about our booster, we are barely at about 50%. We actually have 113,974 individuals eligible to get their booster, but as of April 13, we are at 50.99%, 58,120 individuals have received their booster shot. So the challenge is still here with, for us and our community to increase the number of those who receive their booster shot. We have 55,854 individuals have yet to receive their booster shot, or 49%. Our children population of 5 to 11 is estimated at 17,044. We also need, as you can imagine, to protect our community and to protect our children. For the first dose, we had 46% approximately, which is 7,849. Second dose of that population, we're 36.52, or 6,225. So as you can see, even with regard to our efforts, we are with eligible at 96.17%. We still have work ahead of us to protect our community for those who are booster, and then also now we have the fourth booster, that is a second booster which is available, and I don't have data for that this afternoon for you, Senator, or the body. But we're in the public health emergency because we're not out of the emergency just yet. We talk about the exit plan, we talk about building the capacity within public health and social services to test and treat. That is a conversation that is being discussed, but it's, we are not there yet. We are not at that point where public health and social services is built today. We are talking about it, but we're not ready to take on test and treat at the two health centers, independent of any support and, and resources that are given to us today. I know that incident commander Esteviz has indicated this timeline. So incident commander will present the plans over to me and to the other members of the department, and we review it with them along with our deputies, and we see how feasible that plan is based on what data is presented to us during that presentation by incident commander, and we consult and confer also with our chief medical, interim medical examiner, officer, excuse me, Dr. Bob. And based on all the input and the subject matter access, we then determine what our next step would be, Senator. So the, the crisis is still here with us. I think what we've learned through the years is we definitely have a different narrative. When that started, we didn't have the vaccines, we only had testing. Now we have vaccines, now we have therapeutics. So just in the life of the, the response to the virus, COVID-19, the response in terms of treatment has also been built, and so it has changed. However, as incident commander Esteviz noted earlier, there is no clear indication whether the current virus will further mutate, or new strain will reassort itself, and will have a new strain of virus that even is more virulent, more aggressive, perhaps more individuals may end up needing healthcare, or it may be similar to Omicron. We have a high positivity rate, but we don't have the high hospitalization rate as we did with another previous strain. So we're still working through this response. There is definitely, obviously, in our community, it's obvious, there is a degree of recovery. Restaurants are opening, establishments are opening, schools reopen, so those are good things, but we still need to work through the process of, of potential surge in how we would respond to that, not just in healthcare, but the schools to make sure that we're prepared for that, public health is prepared for that, moving individuals from what they're doing today to re-help and the assistance, to help and assist in the response effort if need be, to increase testing and treatment. So we're, we don't have it fully integrated. I wish I could come this afternoon and tell you it is fully integrated. I would be glad to state that to the body, but I can't state that, because that's not where we are at this afternoon, Senator. So we do need this public health emergency to assist us to move ourselves forward. Some of the earlier senators had asked about questions like an exit plan, the commission plan, and those are things that definitely we need to consider and look at. We do meet, the governor's executive order has provided us many ways in terms of guidance moving forward, but we do also, Public Health and Social Services need to have our own internal plan so that should there be a surge or resurgence of a virus or a strain, that we are prepared to respond. And this is always in collaboration with our other healthcare providers and partners like GMHA, working with Administrator Lillian Vasadas would be one of the efforts that we would need to continue to collaborate with Senator. And so we're still in the public health emergency, we're not in the clear, and I know it may seem, seem like, well, Director, you're saying you're not in the clear, but the numbers look encouraging. They are, they are encouraging, and we have the people to thank for that, for coming out and getting vaccinated, but we still need to ask our community to come out and get their booster shot. We need to increase the number of children who are to be protected because of this virus. And so we're, we're not where we need to be as a community in terms of taking over without the support of our partners at this time.
Well, I appreciate that conversation, because now it's, I'm not concerned about an exit plan, I'm just concerned about where the goalpost is at now. You see, well, because the reason to say this is because in July of last year, the goalpost was at 80% herd immunity.
Right.
Okay? And then in August, it became more than that, because now we had to protect the herd. And now I'm hearing today that now the, the goalpost is going to be changed because of the number of people that we need to get boosted. When were we going to tell the community that that's, you know, that, that the state of emergency can be possibly lifted, because we, we need to get more people boosted? This is the first time I've heard this conversation about the need for booster.
Well, Senator, I, I do know that we do have these weekly conversations with the media, and my, my sense is that we have been sending this message out. I can't say how it didn't reach your, to you, sir, to you, but we can definitely set something up to send some of this information on a regular basis to the Speaker, if that would be appropriate, and she, we can send our flyers to the legislative body with regard to the booster. And you're right, the goalpost has changed. The goalpost has changed dependent on the variant and how the variant comes in terms of how it presents itself. One, one strain, we have many folks going into the hospital. We saw the front page of the hospital beds, there at the arrival of GMHA, the current strain, Omicron. We see high number of cases in the thousands, like within a span of two to three weeks, but we didn't see the high number of admissions, you know? And then, as you, as you, as you can also see, Senator, and members of the body, even the CDC is changing. Now we have CDC community levels, low, medium, and high, medium, and low, and that's now what we're using also here in Guam to gauge where we are in terms of community level. So yes, the goalpost has changed, and some of the factors continue to change based on latest information that is provided to us from subject matter experts and from CDC and WHO and other resources that we rely on, sir.
So can you understand the frustration that not just this body, but a lot of people in the community have? Okay? When we, we don't even know where the goalposts are at anymore? I mean, today is the first time that I've heard that, okay, you know, we're basically at about 50% booster, again, as far as, you know, booster rate, but then we, we need more to be able to get all this. What is that magic pill now? What is that magic number now?
Well, we would have to speak with, I don't want to make any guesses, Senator. We'd talk to our epidemiology, our EPIs folks and get that number from them.
And I think that's very important, because then, yeah, now I can understand why there's not even an exit strategy, because we don't even know where the goalposts are at.
Well, you know, Senator, one of the EPI, one of the folks we work with, the strain, based on its characteristic, its transmissibility, then changes the percentage, and so.
Sure.
We'll definitely have to talk to our EPI, our subject matter experts in terms of what this data means, and we can.
And who's the subject, I'm, I'm getting a little confused here. Who is it, WHO or CDC? Who are we listening to?
Who do we listen to?
Yeah.
We listen to all, in terms, we listen to our local EPIs, we listen to our physicians, our subject matter experts, and we use CDC and WHO also as references. So it's really, it's taking all this information and understanding and synthesizing it, and then seeing what's best, what, what science and data dictates for us and what's best for Guam, and then that's how we move forward, sir.
Okay. Okay, this goes on to the next question that I have. You know, basically, when you're responding to emergency, there are basically three different categories in as far as actions to be taken in emergency, okay? That's response, recovery, and mitigation. What stage are we at right now?
We are still in response.
After two years, we're still in response?
Yes, the entire nation is still in response, Senator. With the national emergency, the entire nation is still in response technically. That's why these resources are still coming to Guam.
So, so basically, because it's national, there's resources that are still coming to Guam, you know, one of the questions and one of the concerns that we got is if we lift our state of emergency, local state of emergency, the federal state of emergency still in existence, that we're still going to have a chance of losing our federal, our, our funding?
No, I make no statement to the funding, but regardless of the public health emergency, we are still in response mode, only that we've lost one of the most important tools to meet that response.
Yeah, okay, and I think that for most of us here that, that recognize and understand emergency management, if you're still in response, okay, and you're still, especially in a federal state of emergency, I don't think you're going to lose your, your opportunity for federal funding if you can justify the continued existence without your own state of emergency. Case in point, 9/11. Okay? You know, one of the things I want to, Dave, I need to ask you this question. You, you mentioned as far as your, that you've got to open, what's, what's the disaster number for, for this?
For COVID is DR4495.
Okay.
Is the way FEMA has enumerated it.
So you've got 4495 open?
Yes.
Okay, and how many, how many projects do you have?
Right now, 63.
63 projects. A total of how much?
18 have been obligated or funded, about $37 million.
37?
All the others, yeah, all the others, we're looking at total, funded and unfunded, a little over $100 million.
Okay. Of that money, is there any money that is being slated for de-obligation?
Right now, at the moment, no.
Nothing?
And now I mentioned earlier about determination memos, that a couple of agencies may get a denial letter, that's what they call the DM, but that's still in the early stages, they have a chance to appeal that, so no final determination has been made on that.
Are there any projects that have been funded, but there have no, been, no moving on it, so there's been concern with regards to whether or not we need that money and they're going to de-obligate it?
I'm sorry, can you say that one more time?
Were there any projects that were funded, okay?
Okay.
Monies were uploaded, but it has not been spent, and there is now, and has there been any discussion about any of these projects being de-obligated, the funding being de-obligated?
No, not at the moment, no. A lot of them are still ongoing, we haven't closed it out.
Okay. And, and the reason why I'm asking this, this question is because it is, you know, it's in the area of the hospital beds.
Yes.
Okay, didn't we get, isn't there an open project for alternative housing?
That's correct. Originally, started at $15 million, and we re-scoped that project, it's going through a re-scoping.
Uh huh.
Which means the money is going to be reduced down to about $5 million on that.
Okay, why?
Why?
Yeah.
Anybody in the hospital can answer that? I think a lot of it is because they were trying to build a, a permanent facility, an alternate care site, it's supposed to be what they call a warm site, temporary facility, so it didn't meet the FEMA policy.
Pardon?
It didn't meet the FEMA policy for eligibility.
Okay, so who requested for the 15, or did FEMA just upload that?
Who, who's got the money right now?
No, 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 the 15. Okay, you said initially it was, it was slated for 15, then it was.
Right, right, that's what FEMA approved.
Re-scoped to five?
FEMA approved $15 million initially.
Based on, and then this was based on basically an application?
Based on the scope of the project at that time, they were developing that, and as it went through the whole review process, it, it kind of changed. I don't know the background of that, because it started way before my time, goes back to 2020, the beginning of the pandemic, when they were scoping that whole project out. I think that, yeah, Guam Memorial Hospital is really have the handle on that, if you're going to ask Lillian Vasadas or.
And that, I think that's part of information manager, that's really crucial for us to be able to move forward, you know, and a lot of us, because, I mean, whether, you know, first up, $15 million, and then it gets, you know, goes down to five, and it's still sitting there, you know? And one of the concerns that we have with regards to the response is our hospital, is our, is our capacity. Well, if we had at least $5 million sitting in an account for the last two years, you know, when it took CNNOMI less than 45 days to use that money and to be able to stand things up, what are we doing? Okay? I'm, I'm going to continue on, because I'm really looking at my time here. You know? Ramon, Ramon. Dave, how many, other than 4944, how many disasters does your office are, do you, do you have in your, in your queue?
We're still also dealing with the legacy typhoon disasters from the past.
Okay.
Typhoon Halong, which goes back to 2014, we finally closed that, and we got Dolphin in 2015, and we got Woodtip and Mangat is the other ones, about.
Okay.
Three more that we're trying to close also at the same time.
Okay, are the state of emergencies related to any of those disasters still in existence?
Well, they're still in existence, we just need to close it out.
Yeah, but are they still in the state of emergency?
For the, no.
No, they're not.
The disasters are gone already.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, exactly. So basically, you could still continue to use this and still have to work on those projects, you know, way past a state of emergency, right?
Right, right.
I just want to get past this fallacy that once we get out of the state of emergency, all of a sudden, 4944 disappears.
Right.
That's not the case, right?
Right.
Okay, at least we can be able to deal with that myth. Okay? Now, let's go back to the basics of this thing. This resolution, do you have, or I have a copy of the, of the resolution as amended or as substituted? Okay, I'm assume, I'm going to assume that you all have. Okay, I'm going to refer to the second to the last whereas, okay, which is basically found on page, page four? I'm not going to use my time in reading that. Okay? Can somebody please, based on that, and based on what is in law? Okay, is this still the reality? Is this still the possibility that we, that exists today?
Senator, to your question, if it's a possibility?
Yes.
It is a possibility.
Okay, that's great, because you see, the thing is, I'm, I'm kind of interested, you're a state of emergency, yet we opened up our, our, you know, opened up Guam for, for people to come back into Guam, you know, with no quarantine, no, no required checks. How does COVID get to Guam?
It was at the time worse than around Guam, which it made no sense at that point to have such restrictions when we had greater numbers and prevalence than the US. We always fall behind typically Hawaii by around two to three weeks.
Okay, but how did the, how did the virus enter Guam?
Well, I wouldn't venture to guess exactly how it came to Guam.
Yeah, based on our, based on our data and what we got, and our scientific data that we, that we seem to be, you know, relying on.
Yeah, I wouldn't venture a guess, or I wouldn't say specifically, only, you know, maybe formulate an opinion, that the assumption is that it came from a domestic flight.
Domestic flight, okay, but it came from a flight. It came from a flight, from a passenger.
It didn't come from a cruise ship, yes, it came from a flight.
Okay. Yet, because we're still in a state of emergency, we're concerned about the high probability, we went ahead and we're opening up our skies again, right? I'm going to save my questions for the second round, Madam Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Senator. Senator Pedro Terlai, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Before I start with my, some of this, my statements in regards to some of the responses that were brought up, I want to thank the panel for being with us since this morning and this afternoon. You guys are doing a good job, so I, my, my congratulations to all of you. Maybe some of the questions that are being presented are not, are not answered to the best, but I, I feel that you guys are doing your very best to probably later on get the answer. There's several things that I wanted to bring. There's several things that I wanted to bring up and some of my concern has to do with the social standing. The social standing of our community and maybe the social stratification that we apply in reference to the emergency. And I'm a little bit concerned because we have heard some of the testimony that was, that has been presented since this morning and there's no confirmed answers as to whether or not we're gonna lose federal funds. And when this bill came out, Bill two ninety-one, I was very concerned that once we effectuate Bill two ninety-one and do away with the public health emergency, some of the federal funds are not gonna be a reality to, to us, if you will. And I'm concerned, and now that, uh, we're right in the verge of getting all the information from the presenters and some of the questions that are being asked, uh, I just wanna say that, you know, when we talk about our social standing and social stratification, I'm talking about money. I'm talking about the finances that is being made available by the federal government. And I'm just a little bit concerned that if we lift the public health emergency, uh, a lot of our people are gonna suffer. And, uh, I don't, I, I really don't wanna experience that. Other than questioning each and every one of you, the answers that were presented, that was presented or given to us this morning, uh, can it just give me the, um, the heads up of just what we're lacking here? And I wanna thank my colleague for their questions, because I'm one that don't really come out with questions, I just listen to the presenters and some of the questions that are being presented to the, to the panel. And though I'm not really totally satisfied with what came out this morning, I'm just concerned, and this is the only thing that I wanna ask. And I wanna ask, uh, Mr. Stevens and the Director of Public Health. If Bill two five one, if the, the public health emergency is lifted, for sure, are we going to lose federal funds? That's my only question, that's, that, that's all that concerns me right now, are we gonna lose, because my, my support for two ninety-one is kinda just, just leery right now, because I don't know what to decide on. But if we're gonna, if we're gonna live the public health emergency, are we gonna lose federal funds? That's what I'm concerned about. And when I talk about social standing, that is what I meant. And when we talk about the social stratification of our society, that is what I'm talking about, what are we gonna do about it? As individuals and of, you know, department heads. So can I have that answer, please?
For public health, Senator Pedro Terlai, for Public Health and Social Services, as we had presented earlier, sir, there will be an impact to the SNAP program. Uh, the SNAP program requires both a local public health emergency declaration and the national declaration. And that's where we are at today now, in terms of what we stand to lose. Uh, of course, you can obviously see to my immediate left is Tashk Archangel, and she is the Chief Administrator for the Division of Public Welfare. And based on the estimates that she is sharing with me, we, through the SNAP program, lifting the public health emergency with no other local emergency intact, we stand to lose an estimated twenty million for the SNAP program. Now, again, just to be clear, this is not the core program. This is, for example, the emergency assistance that is given to our SNAP households, our SNAP consumers, but it also is inclusive of any potential, the school pandemic EBT for the kids. And so that's a combination of those two. And when you think of twenty, potentially twenty million, we're also thinking about twenty million that would be in our economy that our households would have avail and bring into the economy and stimulate our economy and our grocery stores. And, um, other stores, of course, that are SNAP beneficiaries can avail off. And of course, these companies in turn pay GRT. So, uh, that's for public health, and I can't speak to any other department. Um, it, it's really just our public welfare program that, right now, that we are aware of with regards to this. Uh, some of, some of the other ones is not so much a loss of income, revenue, but uh, it may just design their program, if they have the ability to be more flexible today, because there's a public health emergency locally declared. You can move your money, they call it bucket funding, where you can move funding between your existing grants. Uh, should the public health emergency not be available here on Guam locally, then their funding source will be restricted to the intent of that program. So it just goes back to its original intent. I don't know if Tess wants to add anything else. Okay.
Thank you very much, Mr. Director, and let me just bring up something, because, you know, I was talking about uh, federal funds, right? And along with that, along with that, uh, the federal funds, I'm also concerned about the, the medical services that is being provided, like, you know, we're getting those booster shots and things like that. Those are the things that I'm concerned about. If we continue to get that, and if we continue to get the federal funds, and even if we live the public health emergency, then, you know, what am I gonna say? Other than support two ninety-one? But as of right now, I cannot say that I will support two ninety-one, because the answers are not with me right now. So I wanna thank the panel again, and, uh, I thank you very much for, for being with us. Good afternoon, thank you, Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey, Senator Terlai. Senator San Augustin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, I'd like to echo what my colleague brought up about thanking the panel for being here. And I, I'd like to thank, uh, more especially Senator Stevens for being in the guard and standing up the guard. I was in the guard for twenty years, I'm like, like Colonel Cruz here, Dave Cruz. We were part of the guard, and we stood up the guard several times, and there is a process. Maybe some of my colleagues are not aware of that, but there is a process, I know Major, uh, Senator Nelson's aware of it. There's a process to stand it up, and there's a process to close it down. You don't just, it's not like a light switch. And the same thing will probably apply to every part of the government of Guam. When Executive Order twenty twenty zero three started, there was a process to get things going, public health, to ramp up, um, homeland security, DOA. Gosh, everybody had to ramp up. But there seemed to be maybe a misunderstanding, I'm not gonna say it's truly a misunderstanding, but you don't just turn off the light switch when you come to an emergency. And what my concern is, and I don't know if any of you on the panel can answer this, to turn back the clock two years, to back to oh three and say, it didn't happen. It did not happen, I have, I'm not comfortable with that. As the oversight for operation appropriation and, you know, that group, we're talking money. I'd like to know if any of you have this, and if you don't have it, then bring it back to us. From the day it started, Executive Order zero three, what was applied for from the federal government, because I understand, federal government, yes, Trump's, oh, I know that. Trump's local law. But in order for Guam to receive anything, the federal, Guam first says, federal government, everybody's worth this, when we have a typhoon, federal government, can you please declare us a disasters zone? Then we go into the, the, the declaration. The beauty is, back then, it was a disaster in the United States, in Conus, and it spread to Guam. We became, we declared the emergency, the governor did. I don't remember anybody complaining, other than me complaining about the roadblocks, cause I got caught in the roadblocks in the beginning. But you know what? I'm a soldier, I understand. I didn't appreciate getting roadblock down in Aspen, but the tank, the, you know, the issue resolved itself, it moved on. What I'm concerned is when we turn back the clock to two years, can any one of you tell me, what did you apply for and what were the conditions of your application? If you kill, if you end the emergency back two years, do you have the authority to apply for any assistance? Unless you can give me that in writing? I think we're wasting, I'm not gonna say we are wasting our time, but I'm wasting my time here. I need to know that information. I know the guard will not get activated unless there was an emergency. Period. For the twenty years I was on, on the guard, active duty, very fine line to activate the guard, very fine line. And if it doesn't exist, it doesn't happen. And I know Colonel Cruz knows that, Dave Cruz knows that very well, cause he's with the air guard, he was at the USPO. But my concern is, unless you have something in writing today, you all have a nice day. And I, if anybody can tell me you have something in writing to present to me, do you have, did you, when the emergency was declared, you had the ability to apply for FEMA? You had the ability to apply for all the different federal money? Reminder, not one person on Guam pays federal taxes, other than Yososki. When you pay your taxes, it's, the emergency system stays on Guam. But every federal penny that comes to Guam, I think it's only the military people like myself and Senator Stevens and Colonel Cruz that has paid into that and other folks that are in the military. Unless you have something, if anybody can, you know, just state it, if you got something to tell me? I know Mr. Byrne is probably like, no. Unless you have something to show me that says you still had the opportunity to apply for something that you, cause you're, cause this is basically saying, we did not have an emergency in twenty twenty dash oh three. This is what this resolution is saying. I don't believe that, and that's how I read it. So, you know, any of my colleagues, shake your head all you want. The last paragraph, page four, or towards the end, determine the declaration of state of mercy, state of public health emergency propagated under Executive Order zero twenty twenty dash oh three. Mr. Byrne, could you tell me what number we're on right now? Executive order, what number are we on right now? What are we on today?
We're on twenty twenty-two, around about eight or nine, I believe.
Twenty, 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 twenty-two?
Yes, sir.
So nineteen executive orders ago?
Oh, no, it's, it's the year, Senator.
No, no, I'm looking, I'm looking at twenty twenty dash zero three, what number are we on right now?
Well, it's numbered by year, so we're on twenty twenty-two, um, oh nine, I believe.
So how many happened on twenty twenty? Ten, twelve, fourteen? Plenty, right? Quite a few.
Twenty, and, and, and all the, uh, all the executive orders that happened in twenty twenty-one.
Okay. But unless somebody can give me an answer, otherwise, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Rigel, you're recognized. All right. Senator Nelson, you're recognized. All right. Uh, we are going to begin round two. Senator Duñez, you're recognized. Your, again, time was yielded to you, so you have additional time.
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair, really quickly. This resolution does nowhere say that there was not an emergency. Nowhere does it say that. I need to go back to, uh, Mr. Cruz. We had a lunch and a nice break, and also, uh, Mrs. Brennan. Um, were you able to secure any documentation and writing that states that we need to be under a local public health emergency to administer FEMA funds that you're currently administering for the public health emergency?
No, I did not.
No, I did not.
Mr. Cruz and Mrs. Brennan, and also Mr. Byrne. Mr. Stevens said that, um, no emergency, uh, funds were used uh, basically for the purposes outside of the regular emergency procurement. However, I seem, you mentioned the single audit, Mr. Byrne, and I seem to remember the auditor showing that the governor actually did take procurement to Adlupe under her attorney to be able to secure quarantine facilities early on. On the record now, is that true?
Senator, that, that wasn't part of the single audit, that was part of the audit conducted by the public auditor.
Yes, do you concur with the public auditor?
My understanding, no. My understanding is that that was determined to be a purchase, not a procurement.
So you dispute the public auditor's finding that there was procurement done outside of homeland security and civil defense for the purposes of quarantine facilities on the record today?
The, yes, um, the, the way that the public auditor expressed it was that certain certain procedures which would have been followed under, under, under procurement were not followed because it was a public, it was a public purchase. And I would point out that this was right at the very beginning of the, um,
That's immaterial.
of the emergency, and we really didn't have a way, we had to stand up these quarantine facilities quickly, and that, and that was what was done. And the governor, um, acted on that, and as soon as that, that was no longer necessary, the public auditor did agree that it went back to the regular procurement process.
So, Mr. Cruz and Mrs. Brennan, or anybody from Homeland Security, do you dispute the public auditor's findings on the initial quarantine facility? I believe it's Pacific Star that was managed by the governor's office as opposed to by yourselves as the emergency management?
Um, thank you, sir. Uh, at this time, I'm going to have to defer to my staff, I was not employed at the time, so I can't, I cannot speak to it, thank you. I would defer to... Um, sorry, Senator. Uh, we weren't involved with the initial procurement. Uh, we, we started the procurement in May for Guam Homeland Security. And, um, uh, that, that's all I have to say.
Was that procurement moved to the governor's office?
Uh, the procurement in May? No, it was under Homeland Security.
So you're on the record saying that you dispute the public auditor's finding that that procurement was moved to the governor's office from Homeland Security for the purposes of procuring the initial quarantine facility at Pacific Star?
Um, sorry, I don't, I don't understand that.
Senator Duñez, could you please clarify your dates? She's talking about May? Which date are you talking about?
I, I'm going off the public auditor's statement.
Yeah, but what date is that describing?
I don't have the date right in front of me, but I'm asking, they, they should know the date, Madam Speaker, they, they are civil defense. Audit is a public document, I'm sure you, it's been issued to your facility and, and to DOA.
That is correct, sir, we did start in May. That was the time that we started procurement for the ISO fac and the Q fac. I believe so.
Had to make that point, because the fact is that there's been on the record a statement that none of this emergency procurement has been done outside of, and, and not for the purposes of any type of procurement, but that's absolutely not true.
So my record, and, and to be clear, I was speaking on behalf of public health, that no public health procurement was done under Chapter nineteen, which is the Emergency Health Powers Act, which the only authority to use that Chapter nineteen power was the Public Health Authority, which at this time is Director Arts and Augustine. Now, for public health, let me be, and we can go back on the tape, cause I'm very concise when I talk. There was no procurement done under Chapter nineteen within the Department of Public Health and Social Services under the authority of the Public Health Authority as cited within the chapter. It was all done through Chapter five. So any other procurement outside of public health, I am not, I have no business speaking to, I'm speaking to what I had said before, within my, within my realm and my scope.
Good enough, Mr. Senator Stevens, cause you've just gave me my segue, that's why I'm going back to DOA. So since public health has been cleared that they have used no procurement under, under the Emergency Health Powers Act with the governor and the declaration, have the autonomous agencies or any other agencies have done procurement under the Emergency Health Powers Act?
I, I would repeat, Senator, that I cannot speak for the autonomous agencies, because they determine their own procurement policies. So I can only speak for the line agencies and those other agencies that are, use the, uh, So I can only speak for the line agencies and those other agencies that are, use the, the purchasing processes of GSA. And, and to answer the second, actually the first part of your question, um, this, this procurement, right, um, was, was not deemed a procurement. The, the governor exercised her, 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 um, powers under the Organic Act. It had nothing to do with either Chapter 5 or Chapter, Chapter 19. She exercised her powers under the Organic Act because there was a pressing and immediate need to have a quarantine facility. That, that was the whole purpose of, I mean, that, at that time, um, that, that was one of the big purposes of having a state of emergency.
And therein lies the problem, Mr. Byrne, because we have one set of rules that is completely cloaked in the Public Health Emergency, and we have other set of rules that's, that's straight away Organic Act power. I, I'm not going to debate with you, but I'm going to say that the public auditor has stated what he stated, and I'm going based on that. But I, I don't want to belabor this point, Mr. Byrne, because I need to move on.
Well, I, I would point out, uh, that as Homeland has said, that that was only for a short period, and in May we reverted to, because we had the time, to a regular procurement process.
It was a short period, Mr. Byrne, when we were still under the Public Health Emergency. So to step aside from that, doesn't make sense. You should use the Emergency Health Powers Act for what they were designed for, but I'm, I'm not going to belabor that. I'm going to go back to Homeland Security. So all of the procurement now and all of the expenditures that you've talked about, Dave, under Senator Blas' description, are these procurements being done under Emergency Health Powers Act?
I really can't comment on that because public assistance doesn't deal with procurement. That's out of my lane. Now, when they get grants, uh, the agencies can use the grant money to procure things. We don't, we don't have.
Under emergency procurement or standard procurement?
Just standard procurement, yeah.
But not under emergency?
It's really out of my lane. We ju, we just manage federal grants. That's what we do. We don't, we don't deal with procurement.
Okay.
So I can't comment on that.
So let's, so let's go back now and deal with, uh, what the Vice Speaker had, had to present to us, okay? And let's, let's, once again, since you have not been able to give us that hard black and white that says we need to be in a state of public health emergency under the governor's declaration, do you stand by the fact that the Stafford Act is durable enough to allow you to continue to procure travel nurses and all the other procurement that you're currently doing?
I can't really comment on that. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Can anyone from Homeland Security answer that question?
Would you repeat the question?
Yes, Mrs. Brennan. Under the Stafford Act, which basically is currently the national emergency that's declared, is there anything that prevent, why isn't the Stafford Act durable enough for you to handle all of these medical needs and all of the current programs you're administering without us being in a local public health emergency? Why is the national emergency not adequate?
Senator Duñez, I don't have a response for that. I think that's something that I'd have to defer to legal to perhaps give, give me some kind of direction.
So we've been taking this on face value that 167 nurses will basically have to jump on an airplane tomorrow if we end this public health emergency because of the fact that that program will now be disallowed and the Stafford Act won't cover that. We have been told that now by many members of this panel. I need you on the record to say whether or not that would happen or wouldn't happen based on the Stafford Act and the national emergency. Why do we need to be in a local public health emergency for 167 nurses? And why isn't all these other states that I've enumerated not in a public health emergency? But I can tell you, nine states right now who have nurses under the Stafford Act, and they are not in a public health emergency, and they are travel nurses.
Again, Senator, I'm going to respond and say that it appears that's a legal question that I have to defer to our legal, uh, to get any kind of response. And that's where I would end that with.
So Madam Speaker, at this time, I'll put it on the record. Arizona healthcare workers, Delaware long-term facilities, Indiana healthcare workers, Kansas healthcare workers, long-term facilities, Hawaii, the SNAP program, Indiana healthcare workers, Virginia nursing homes. All of these states have done a carve-out for nurses, nursing homes, and licensure under their public health emergency. And all the other states have none of it, and they're operating under the national emergency declarations, both to national declarations. Madam Speaker, at this time, I just think there's no way to properly ascertain whether or not there's going to be a loss of federal funds. Because we're getting answers of going to legal, we're getting, this, this is emergency management, Madam Speaker. These are all these declarations and proclamations. I am saying to this, about the SNAP program, Madam Speaker, that I completely concur. But I don't concur that we don't have the ability to do something as a standalone for that, like Hawaii did. So Madam Speaker, I'm going to reserve my time. I have a few more questions. I'm going to reserve my time and let my colleagues ask questions, but right now, I have to state for the record, it would be irresponsible for any member of this body to vote on this resolution with all of this uncertainty.
Thank you, Senator Duñez, Senator Moylan, Senator Ada.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, so much things have gone back and forth here. Let me go back to, um, Public Health for a second. You said about $20 million will be lost for additional. And this is not the basic, this is additional SNAP benefits, right?
Yes, Senator.
Perhaps you might want to use the wired mic. There you go. Thank you.
Tris Archangel from Department of Public Health and Social Services. Yes, Senator, that's potential.
Right. So, but that, that's what it is. It's additional benefits, not basic SNAP benefits, right?
Yes, those are additional benefits. Actually, it's not only the SNAP, uh, clients who's going to receive that, because also that includes the pandemic EBT and the emergency allotment. So the pandemic EBT includes all the children in school.
Uh, I would, I think you should rephrase that though, right? It's not all the children in schools because?
Not all, meaning all children under GDOE.
So what's the difference between a child in GDOE and a child in charter or parochial or private?
They, they receive free meals, those who receive free meals.
So it's only for children who are currently receiving free meals?
From the national, yes.
Okay, that's good. And the, Mr. Byrne, are we still currently utilizing emergency procurement?
Uh, no, Senator, not associated with this. There might be other reasons for emergency procurement, but not as Senator Stavas says, for, for, for public health purposes.
So what has changed for emergency procurement? That now we're in regular procurement during state of emergency?
Partly the law changed.
The law? I, I don't think we've changed the law, so.
Yes, sir. We, we changed the emergency procurement regulations during the course of, of this legislature. But also, we have, um, more experience and emergency procurement is needed when a, a situation comes up that you hadn't anticipated. And as many of the senators have expressed during the course of this session, it's been easier and easier to anticipate some of the problems, but they still don't go away.
Have all vendors been paid? Those that were, that had emergency procurement or even normal procurement, have all vendors been paid already?
DOA pays all vendors, uh, within 30 days of a receipt of invoice at DOA. If the invoice hasn't reached DOA, I can't speak to that. But, um, I have no, um, no currently, no invoices older than, than 30 days.
So DOA currently has zero outstanding for vendor payments?
Well, it has, it has whatever has arisen within the 30 days.
Okay.
You, you're never going to get no, no vendor payment.
So there, there's no one that's 31 days and over then, is what you're saying?
Yes, yes, sir.
I see. So the, so how is it on the, I guess, the emergency procurement that, uh, during the public hearing, uh, Ms. Gruh Sany was saying that she still hasn't been paid? Has that issue been already taken care of?
I haven't seen those invoices. I know she was, I heard her say, and I know she was concerned about invoices that were outstanding, but those invoices have not reached, uh, DOA.
I see. So, so during emergency procurement, what is the, what is the process of submitting invoices and getting them paid?
Precisely the same as any other invoice. That the fact that a, a purchase order is an emergency purchase order doesn't change the process we have for paying vendors.
I see. So, back to Ms. Archangel now, on our, on our SNAP benefits. So if this emergen, if this declaration of emergency ends, do you got $20 million from AARP to use to cover whatever shortages may be?
There's no commitment to that, Senator.
But we wouldn't leave our people out in the cold, right? I mean, I know there's no commitment to it, but if, if the, I mean, if the federal government turned around yes tomorrow and said, this ends the emergency declaration, then where would that put us again?
If the federal government were to stop the declaration on a national level in the nation, that would be across all SNAP programs. So it would be equally applicable at the time of activation or implementation of that nationwide ceasing of a public health emergency with regard to our local situation to alleviate that concern with not to terminate the public health emergency. And we would have 20 million potentially coming to Guam to support our families in greatest need. And that's what we would respond to. Don't have a backup plan because our, our plan is really embedded in the public health emergency locally being maintained.
And I think that, that also goes to then the exit strategy, right? Is having a backup plan for public health as well to ensure that there's a continuity of whatever it may be, right?
Right. So, so i, i, in the situation where we have emergency assistance for our families under SNAP, I, Tess, I'm sure already has in her mind and her team a process in which would notify our SNAP beneficiaries that this would be the last month, this would be the last month of that implementation. We put out press releases when we're going to load benefits. Um, you know, you all know Tess has been with this program for many years, and she's very, very well versed with it. So, you know, I'm counting that she would have a plan, and I'm sure she does, that to notify our households in ample time. According to the announcement, uh, the ending of a public health emergency would be given at least 60-day notice. So that would give us at a minimum two months to notify our households of this change in benefits.
So then the notification from the federal government will come down in about 60 days whether that benefit is going to end, giving you guys the opportunity to announce a?
And, and as many of the different senators have expressed, you know, more, more transparency, we definitely will jump on that concept because we could include that in our, you know, we were trying to do this weekly, and every now and then we had competing demands, but for the most part, more recently, we've been doing weekly briefings with the media. We can do a press release, and we can also incorporate this change in benefits as part of our weekly discussion and presentation with the media.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you too.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Cruz, this, um, just, I guess, my last question to you is, have we had any funding returned to the federal government?
You're talking specifically for COVID? No, not for COVID.
None? So currently, we're utilizing all funding that comes our way?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. That's great to hear. And, I mean, now that we don't, we don't want to see any funding return since we're trying to utilize all the funding that we can get during this pandemic. Okay, thank you. Um, I'd just like to thank all of you guys for, this is my second round, so I'll be ending here, that I'd like to thank all of you for coming down. And I think that perhaps maybe had this been done six months ago, nine months ago, even a year ago, right? I mean, it didn't take all of you to come down. All we needed perhaps was Mr. Cruz, Mr. Sinagene, and Mr. Estevs to come down and just present to the legislature where we're at, at that point in time, so that the public can have that general idea of where we're going, what's going on, and not have this, this, this panic out there that we're going to be in this emergency forever. But at least so that we can have this communication, and I think that was very important. Unfortunately, it didn't happen like that. It had to have Bill 11 go through the process. We had to have this resolution go through the process. But I think when you look at how we're engaging in communication now, I, I just hope that in the future, that we continue to dialogue and we continue to communicate so that we don't leave our people hanging. We don't leave them out there trying to figure out what's going on, and they can hear it for themselves, not just from this legislative body and not just from the administration, but from the experts who know what's going on. So with that said, Madam Speaker, I'd just like to thank you for this opportunity. And perhaps, like my colleague had mentioned, we may not be able to vote on this right now, but, you know, we just need to see where we're going to go. And the information that we continue to get from you and, uh, that we request it from you, and hopefully we get that soon. Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Senator.
Madam Speaker, since I have seven minutes left, I'd just like to yield that to Senator Tiedaway.
Senator, which Senator?
Senator Tiedaway.
Okay. Can the clerk please put up the time for the next senator?
Senator Brown, you're recognized. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I just want to follow up also on the questions I had earlier today. Um, you know, as, we are hopeful, obviously, we're hopeful. I mean, we do see what's happening in the mainland right now, but if, but if we're able to maintain, uh, low numbers, sorry, let me just get this so I don't knock it down. What, in the, in the key departments here, uh, what is the plan to get back to some normalcy? Because I, I mean, it's almost redundant every month. It's an extension of the emergency. May will come, and the governor will extend the emergency, and June will come, and the governor will extend the emergency, and July, and so forth, and so forth, maybe all the way past November. Um, and as mentioned by our colleagues earlier, we, there's many of us in the community that, that have an expectation of trying to return to some sense of normalcy because we do have to get our island and our economy back on track. Somebody's got to pay for all these pay raises and hiring. Because certainly what's happened as a result of this pandemic is government continues to grow. And that's a concern because I don't know that the ratepayers and taxpayers of Guam can afford it when the time comes, and the time will come that they will have to pay for it all. So I think we're still, you know, even though I've heard my other colleagues ask questions as well, what is the plan? I don't care if you call it an exit plan, transitional plan, whatever it is you want to call it. Uh, what, what is it? Once you get a certain point and we can sustain it, granted, I mean, something can come up next year. I hope the expectation isn't that we're going to stay in a state of emergency until next year. Doesn't make any rational sense. And if this is only about the money, because that's all I keep hearing, it's about money, 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 uh, and the expectation that we're going to sustain things that didn't exist prior to the pandemic, um, I don't think a lot of our people want to see that. Because then we're just existing for the pandemic itself, even if there's not the same threat that we previously had. And granted, you know, thank God we got through most of that. Hopefully, we don't have worse ahead of us. But there is an expectation, uh, that we want to get back to some normalcy. Because who's going to pay for all of this? I don't think Uncle Sam indefinitely is going to be paying for all of this. So I don't know, Art or whoever else here on the panel can, can respond to that very key question, because this is really the crux of what this, this resolution's all about.
Thank you so much, Senator Brown. Yes, um, to your point, yes, there is, there is the discussion that there will be a ceasing of this response, but as you said, um, it may be that in the future, we may have to pivot back and.
be that in the future, we may have to pivot back and stand up a response. But you're, you know, that we don't have a, I don't have a, I'm going to speak, I don't have a timeline laid out in terms of when this would be. What I do know is that we're monitoring what's happening here on Guam. We're monitoring what's happening in other places. And that's really based on the data we're receiving, the guidance we're receiving from the CDC, what helps us move forward with what our real next steps are going to be. Many people have talked about the new normal, what's the new normal going to look like. And many of us are already adjusting to that. And so it's it's really us moving forward. But I don't have this afternoon to say, well, this and this in six weeks, this is what it's going to look like. We are, as I shared earlier, we are looking internally in Public Health and Social Services to be able to test and treat those, because we are looking to integrate the response and the ability to treat of COVID- nineteen patients, either for testing or treatment, within the normal operations of Public Health and Social Services. And Senator Commander Estevs talked about June, and that may actually be the viable time period if we are able to maintain the current level where we're at. And while we do that, we're also pushing and promoting, if I may say sorry, not so much pushing, but pushing the agenda for to promote the need to continue the booster activity for those who are due their booster. And all that does is heighten the degree of protection in our community. And so there is going to be that identification of forward. The governor's executive order lays out more more lifting of restrictions after the first fourteen-day passes, which is April nineteen, onto May third. And that, again, is dependent on where we are with regard to our community level and how things look. We did achieve low, and I'm sure you you probably have read, we are at medium, but we're monitoring that, Senator Brown. And so it's it's a place where we're not sure what's what's ahead of us, because we don't know what the future holds. But we definitely are thinking about the new normal. We're thinking, what would it look like, how we would do services. And Senator Commander Fernando talked about the reopening of senior citizen centers. There's still the provision, like, if you want to continue imposing not restrictions, but practices to prevent the transmission, that again is left up to businesses to consider to continue if they so desire. But going back to the senior citizen center, as we are looking at reopening that, that those sites where I'm an uncle, who can be very much a high, who is a very high-risk group, is that they're looking at, perhaps, we still have those dividers. We will maintain those dividers, encourage them to wear masks, and encourage them to get their booster if they haven't already received their primary doses. So it's really looking throughout the community and and trying to identify how we're all moving forward. And some of us have actually, the community's actually done some of this already without any blueprint laid out by Public Health and Social Services or any other agency. Restaurants are opening up as we remove the contact list record. That's already been in place. So now, when you come to a restaurant to have a meal, you no longer need to log in. So these things are are happening through either the executive order or through the Public Health and Social Services guidance memos that are that are are executed or issued, that provide the guidance for what the community is asked to do or required to do. And so, yes, I I hear your your sentiment in the sense that there has to be this thinking forward about us having almost like a closure. And and there there won't be a closure eventually, Senator. I just not in a position to say, I see this happening in three weeks or three months. I I really want to see how the data looks for us with the search that we're seeing in in the states. Senator Blas talked about how did this virus even come to Guam? We're pinpointing perhaps, or pointing out that it's a traveler. And we don't know if a traveler to Guam may present a new strain and how that new strain will manifest itself in terms of the demand on our health care or its transmissibility or its severity. So there is a degree of unknown, and that's why we are being extremely cautious and careful with regards to us lifting too quickly too soon and also not being, you know, but always staying mindful, really staying mindful of what what's happening out in the beyond the shores of our island. That, as we have said earlier, maybe two to three weeks out, what we see happening in states or in Hawaii seems to show up on our shores. So we are talking internally about how we would manage the response to COVID- nineteen within our resources and not relying on the resources of our external partners. But we're, like I said earlier, Senator, we are not there yet today. We are working towards that. I know you spoke about funding, and I did share that funding possibility for public health infrastructure. But that that infrastructure is designed for a limited period, and that infrastructure, should we get the grant, is really to be able to sustain that component, the new component of being able to test and treat those of COVID- nineteen. So that's what that funding is. It's really looking at how we can reimagine public health and social services. So there is there's a so many things happening in terms of how we would build our infrastructure, but also our data management component. And we don't have the grant. I want to be very clear. It's a grant that was just recently announced. We will be applying for it in hopes of receiving the grants so we can maintain our operations and and not not be reliant on our external partners, for example, like the National Guard. You know what? The National Guard has done a great job. We appreciate what they bring to the table. But also, we recognize that moving forward, Public Health and Social Services needs to be able to be self-sustaining in this operational aspect.
I appreciate all that. I think our our public appreciates all the work and effort that's been put in place to help get us through the challenges, obviously, that we've had over the last three, well, this is the beginning of the third year. There's no argument there. But I think what has come to light, and certainly through the initiative of Bill Eleven and this resolution, you know, we really need to lift the veil of secrecy of exactly how these resources of the people have been and are being managed. I'd like to think that of the all, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars that Guam has been given, there's only, oh, we're just going to have to now account and go through the appeals process for two million. The odds of that, to me, we'll see. We'll see, Mr. Cruz, in time, really, how that how that comes to be, because, you know, we do live in a democracy, and I guess we have to remind ourselves of that. And while you are doing your respective roles and responsibilities on your side, we certainly would not be responsible if we weren't here to question what actions and decisions are being made, because solely, you know, come election time, it's not just the governor of Guam that's being elected. And we have a role and responsibility to ensure that these resources are also being properly spent and spent in the interests of the public. But when we don't have that information, still to this day, we don't, the people of Guam do not have the specifics of how millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars of public resource that was intended for our people have been spent. We don't know. And that's the problem. And the fact that that's not been forthcoming, and the fact that we have to introduce bills and pass legislation to have that information brought forth, to me, is very problematic, because the governor says she's transparent. We're transparent, but in practice, really, all the initiatives to ask for this information is really coming from the House of the People. It's not coming from the administration providing that information. And all that does is create mistrust. All that does is create an opportunity for the misuse and abuse of public funds, because let's not kid ourselves, it has happened. It's happened in this administration. Probably will happen in the next. I don't know. But the more light that is shed on the issue, the more accountability all public officials, to include all of you, have, because I don't have any problem. If I go back, if I go back to the people of the people of Guam, I have no problem. I'm here. That's for them to decide. But we also have a role and responsibility to ensure also that other appointed public officials, many of which we've confirmed, we have a right to ensure that public officials are also being accountable. So I don't know, Madam Speaker, if we have to introduce a resolution every month to have this open dialogue, so the people of Guam can get a proper standing of where we are at and where the administration is with regards to responding to this pandemic and what programs and what federal funding is being provided to our people. Perhaps that's what we need to do. It's unfortunate if that's the case, because this is the kind of dialogue that should have been happening. Granted, during the emergency, we understand it's all hands on deck, and we have to go out and do what we need to do. But we're not there anymore. And hopefully, we don't go back to that. But I do want to state for the record, if we need to, then perhaps we need to, because our government and the administration so far has not been openly forthcoming with regards to the expenditure of funds that she continues to remind our people are solely under her authority. With that, Madam Speaker, and thank you to the panel, and thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to ask questions and comment.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Vice Speaker Munia Barnes, you're recognized.
She's a small C, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair.
Sorry, if you could hold on, we'll load we'll load your time up. My apologies. Vice Speaker, please proceed.
She's a small C, Madam Speaker. Madam Chair, I want to pose a question for all of for all who are on this panel this afternoon. And I hope you all can give your perspective as it relates to the impact of the mission of your agency. And as I read Chapter Nineteen, specifically, I'm going to note Section one nine four oh five, the termination language, as it's currently written, the emergency health power is one is one overarching definition, and its termination would terminate all or nothing. You can't pick and choose what to end or what to extend, correct? And Madam Chair, I while I'm very grateful that our ever-so-amazing and gracious former legal counsel on this panel representing the office of the Attorney General, I'd like to, in addition to all the panel members here today, I would like to also pose the same question to our legal counsel. And I don't know if we have to take a recess or not. So I want to see if there is a concurrence on the understanding on the applicability of the law as it relates to nineteen four oh five. And I have it right here in order to save me time. So, Madam Chair, if I may.
Are you you're sorry, you're addressing that to all of the panel members?
Everybody, including our legal counsel.
Attorney General, you can, I would ask you to consult with our own legal counsel. But if the Attorney General's representative, Ms. Manjo, Attorney Manjo.
I mean, if we need a minute's recess, Madam Chair, I'm I'll go ahead and ask for it, too, and then we can come on. But I'd like to hear it from everybody's perspective.
Yeah, we'll proceed with the panel.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Vice Speaker. Can I just confirm that I understand the question? You're asking if the termination of the public health emergency declaration under nineteen four oh five is the termination of the entire public health emergency?
To to, yeah. You can't pick and choose to what end or to extend what, right? Because it specifically states, they're not timing me on this one, because she's asking the questions again, right?
Yes, I'm just asking to clarify that I understand the question.
So the clock keeps moving, Madam Chair. So the termination of Declaration Executive Order, Imago Lahe in Guam, the governor, shall terminate the declaration of a state of a public health emergency by executive order upon finding that the occurrence of an illness or health condition that caused the emergency no longer poses a high probability of a large number of deaths in the affected population, comma, a large number of incidents of serious permanent or long-term disability in the affected population, or a significant risk of substantial future harm to a large number of people in the affected population. So we know that it's in this section is specifically overarching, and and it terminate and its termination would terminate all or nothing, and you can't pick and choose what to end or what to extend. So to that effect. So and its applicability of law from each each agency's perspective, but also from from you and our legal counsel.
So just Mossy, Vice Speaker, the termination of the public health emergency, whether by this body or the governor, would be the termination of the public health emergency that was declared in twenty twenty dash zero zero three. So there wouldn't be, if I understand correctly what you mean by picking and choosing, there wouldn't be an ability to narrow it in any particular way. It's either going to be the all-or-nothing termination of the declaration in twenty twenty dash zero zero three. What would have been subsequent to that is a different question.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, anybody?
Public Health.
Or Estev?
If if my understanding and my reading of that section, well, before I took over, so the legislature does have the power to terminate it. However, the executive order rests solely with the chief executive. So that would mean that the contents of said executive order, or what we would call the ability to narrow what's in it, is exclusive to the governor. And so my reading and understanding, although I'm not an attorney, but my experience in the legislature, would say that it just only gives the ability, all or nothing.
Public Health. That was Public Health.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Director, did you want to add in?
No, actually, it's 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 it is a it's a very good question point, Vice Speaker, and a legal question. I am not an attorney, so I'm not going to try to interpret the law. But my understanding, it is, I suppose, that it would be all or nothing in this provision, that I don't see here in this provision that you would be able to handpick certain points or parts. But again, I will go on record that I am not an attorney. So this is just my public health perspective as the Director of Public Health and Social Services.
Thank you. DOA, would you like to chime in? And then Homeland?
Thank you, Vice Speaker. I would echo Mr. Sanorgus's remarks. That calls for a legal conclusion, which DOA is not in a position to do. But I would point out that, you know, during this whole period, DOA has had to be in operation to support all these other agencies in their in their mission. And during the course of that, you know, we kept open, basically, throughout, you know, from from day one through whenever it is appropriate to terminate it. And we're ready to react to a termination, should the governor think that was appropriate, or we're ready to keep on as we are because there is a need for a for a public health emergency until this pandemic is considered to be, I think it was mentioned earlier, is considered to be endemic rather than a pandemic.
Thank you. Homeland?
Vice Speaker, thank you. As I understand the question, it's yes, it's all or nothing. So I would, at this point, I'm going to defer and concur with Mr. Estev's statement, as all is the Attorney General. I'm I believe that, at this point, that's where my stance would be.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, legal counsel or, oh, that's Homeland. He's also part of Homeland, right, Mr. Cruz?
Recovery Office.
Recovery Office.
That's correct, Mad Vice Speaker.
Okay.
The impact for this emergency, if it were to end on the staff and the recovery office, would be actually minimal for the staff, because we would still be around to manage the closeout and the reimbursement claims until everything is completely closed out, including the typhoons. As far as requests for public assistance, that'd be up to FEMA to entirely end the the whole program. So we work closely with FEMA. We dialogue with them practically every week. So we would have to take our cue from FEMA on ending the whole public assistance program.
So based on the section of nineteen oh four, do you, in your perspective, is it an all or nothing, or to what extent? Would you agree with the other perspectives or?
Well, that depends. That depends, yeah. I can't really say either way.
Madam Chair, if I can ask our legal counsel.
Vice Speaker, our legal counsel's not part of our panel. They are available to us before, during, and after session. And if you would like, we could proceed with the next senator, and you can have that opportunity. And we'll come back to you with the remainder of your time on the third round.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. It's exactly what I'll do. I'll sleep legal, our legal counsel right now. Sinamasi.
Sinamasi. Senator Shelton, you're recognized. Senator Paris, you're recognized.
I think most of the questions.
I'm sorry, let's load your time and see what we've got left. Senator Paris?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I think most of the questions were asked and answered that I had. And I just want to thank the panel for being here. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Tidaway, you're recognized. And we'll load your time, if you could hold on for one minute. And we could also add on the time that was waived to her. And we could also add on the time that was waived to her.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Earlier, you answered a question with regards to utilizing the emergency. Well, actually, talking about $20 million and $7 million, it was mentioned earlier. Now, this afternoon, it's now $20 million. So can you tell me, when you answered that question, you said if the Emergency Powers Act were lifted, no longer in place, there's no way for you to actually receive this supplemental funding through any other type of emergency? And I'm referring to Chapter Title 10, Chapter 3, Article 3.
Chapter 10, Title 3, Article 3.
The disease?
Right, right. That's actually for reporting of diseases, either contagious or new. So that authority allows me to add on a disease that would be reportable, what the subsections that follow there. The sections that follow thereafter are those that are mandated to report that reportable disease. But in terms of the SNAP benefit, Tess Archangel.
No, the question was, and stop the clock, because I don't think you understood my question. The question was, you mentioned earlier that if the Powers Act were out, no longer available, there is no other, and then you mentioned that if that was completely gone and no other means available, that you would lose 20 million. This afternoon, I mean, this morning, you said first it was 7 million. Now we're, afternoon is at 20. And I do realize where it's coming from. No need to answer it, you know? The childcare, the ET.
The summer view.
So my question is, if you were to utilize Chapter, or Title 10, Chapter 3, Article 3, under disease control, which has been used in the past when we had an issue with TB, when we had an issue with other scenarios, and clearly, 70 and 71 of this chapter indicates that it can be used for COVID, based on CDC, that the governor can use this as an emergency declaration? So that's my question.
Right, so Senator, my read of this is really the section that you're referring to is with regards to disease control. And so Section 70 is for me to, if I deem any other disease to be dangerous, I could add it to the regulation. Followed by 71, that if it's of a severe communicable disease, basically, it allows me to add the disease and I can promulgate at a later time when practicable. So what follows after that is, like, 3302, ma'am, is duty to report, once I add it on. And this is, I don't have history in which you refer to that it was used for TB. What I do know about TB in terms of when we are using our authority under this area for disease control is we are able to order the person to be in isolation. And so that's what we've used this for in the past, that I'm aware of. I'm not aware of it being used for a public health emergency in the regard that it is being used today.
You've never seen an executive order using this particular chapters for any type of diseases under this chapter?
For the, I came on in July 2020. And when I came on in July 2020, Senator, it was on COVID. So it may have happened prior to my coming onboard?
I think so.
Like I said, I'm not saying it didn't happen. I'm just saying I'm not aware that it may have happened prior to me coming onboard.
You mentioned also that, according to some court case regarding using Title 10, Chapter 3, when first.
Not necessarily Chapter 3, ma'am. I was just referring to Title 10, that there was a there was a case in which there's a provision here, and I need to locate that for a discussion, when it was used, and there was a court proceeding that referenced that provision. Not saying Chapter 3, but maybe. Is that, we have to go back another court case, and I can look that up and present it to the body.
Yeah, because I don't find any citations whatsoever referring to that.
It was, I believe, a quarantine case, ma'am.
But nothing in citation, no decision or anything like that made onto that, right?
It was a rule by the judge, ma'am, a court proceeding.
Yeah, that's the one I'm trying to find, and I don't see it anywhere.
I'll have to be the one who looked up for that, ma'am. I've got a file on those court proceedings. And we can review and pull that up, ma'am.
It was said earlier that it was asked, I think Senator Pito mentioned, you know, are we going to lose all this funding? And I think, you know, when you answered that question, you did mention that if there was nothing else available. Is that correct?
Right, we don't, we don't have.
If there's nothing else available.
Yeah, well, what I did say earlier, and I'm not sure which senator, is that with regards to the short, not funded, it would be local coffers that we would be looking at?
The National Public Health Emergency Status Correct right now has been extended for another 90 days, expiring on July 16th. Once this is no longer in effect, the EPT that you talked about earlier, as well as the SNAP subsidies, would that end once the National Public Health Emergency ends?
It will end one month after the ending of the National or the Nation's Public Health Emergency.
It's not 90 days, it's 30 days?
No, the benefits. The public health emergency on the national level has been extended. It's effective, I believe, April 16 to come, and 90 days out.
Yeah, July 16.
Yeah, actually, April, May, June, July, July 15, July 16, right? So if there is no extension of the U.S. Public Health Emergency and the nation, the public health program under the emergency assistance for SNAP is given an additional one-month allotment. So let's just say for, it does actually end on July 15 or 16. We still have one month of benefits under emergency assistance that we can provide to our community. And that's all part of the emergency pandemic assistance.
Can we use the ARC funding to subsidize the SNAP program?
I have not explored that, ma'am. I wouldn't be able to answer that right now.
Mr. Burns, can you answer that question? Can we use the ARC funding to subsidize the SNAP program if we no longer get it?
No, Senator. The SNAP program funding comes directly from the federal government.
Right.
And we cannot use federal funds to subsidize federal funds.
Federal funds, okay. So you mentioned all the things that you're putting in place currently right now, and art, the way it looks like, it indicates that we're in recovery mode. We're already trying to move out of it. Madam Speaker, I wanted to save my closing, so I'll just reserve my ending for closing. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Titekwe. Senator Blassey, I recognize.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Art, just so that we can go back and then test, so that we can clarify with clarity, okay? Was the emergency assistance provided to Guam, okay, for the SNAP? Was that a result of the local emergency or the federal state of emergency? Anyone?
Okay, Tess and I are working together this afternoon. So it is both. You have the National or U.S. Nation's Declaration, and we have our local declaration. So it does require both, sir.
Okay, but how was it made? Was it made available because there was a federal state of emergency?
That would be the impetus.
Yes, so that's what I'm getting at, okay? So this whole thing existed because of the federal state of emergency. Am I correct?
Correct, due to the.
So the federal state of emergency, just to reiterate what was asked by Senator Titekwe, if this federal state of emergency were to expire or were to be limited effective tomorrow, we have 30 days, no matter how long we extend our federal, our local state of emergency. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and right now, we anticipate that you're looking at a total combined SNAP and otherwise, you're looking at $20 million. Am I correct?
That is, that is our potential projections.
Okay, what is the plan to be able to get us back to normal once all of that is done? I'm taking, okay? Once we lose all of that, okay? Because eventually, come August, right? Because July is the last day, and then August, 30 days. Okay, what's the plan?
The SNAP services continues. We just resumed.
What's that? Sorry?
SNAP services continues.
Yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
But at least, we were able to assist those who struggle during the, I mean, up to that month, yes.
So as I shared earlier, Senator, the core program continues on?
I understand, and we understand. The core program will continue on. And I appreciate that the emergency assistance provided for those individuals that continue to struggle. What is the plan to be able to, if the economy is not opened up and these people continue to struggle? What's the plan there?
Well, Senator, after that, we'll definitely, we need to assess if the community have recovered and see, we, if not, then our director would, I guess. I mean, if there's still a need, then it's up to the government if they want to continue that.
Our government?
There's no need with regards to, that will be local funding. We need to assess the community.
And has there been any attempt to be able to look at these scenarios? Has there been any attempt to be able to, with this scenario, any attempt to be able to address it? The what-ifs? Have we started with the what-if scenarios? Coming up with plans?
I believe, Senator, the plan is really, the transition period is that as we were moving forward in the new normal, then, and there is no more, there is the closure of the National Public Health Emergency at the national level and the nation, then we would work with our local beneficiaries under the SNAP program to advise them of the change in benefits and what date that would be.
And thank you, Mr. Sinagastin and Mr. Archangel. And please, I encourage, okay? Let's not wait until July to be able to come up with a plan. Okay, I appreciate Senator Estevis in as far as his, you know, wanting to end things in June.
We did. We actually, not on the SNAP program, but we increased the income guideline of the Medicaid to assist them on their medical so that they have enough money to spend for their food. So more people will qualify.
So what are we losing? I mean, if you did that already, what do we, what do you say we're going to lose? Now I'm even more confused.
I don't mean to confuse you, Senator. Tess is just sharing this afternoon some of the steps we've taken to assist our community in greatest socioeconomic need. Should there be, and there will be eventually, the transition away from the emergency assistance for food stamp. She was just sharing this afternoon that they've taken measures already to increase the poverty level so more of our local residents may qualify for, for example, Medicaid. And to the statement regarding incident Commander Estevis, I don't think it's so much his statement was to end it, but his statement, I believe, and I took it this afternoon, simply to say that he would like to see Public Health and Social Services, as a member of our Public Health and Social Services team in June, be able to stand up, treat, test and treat. And that's what I understand, Senator.
And it goes to, again, I mean, this is why I appreciate this conversation. And I'm sorry that it sounds, in some cases, sarcastic or aggressive and everything. But after many, many, many months of wanting to have this conversation and not being forced to have this conversation because you've got something before you, you know, to justify, for lack of a better term, existence in a state of emergency, it's unfortunate. Did it have to come to this? No, it didn't. All right? Actually, I want to get back to the procurement. And I'm very curious, you know, about the whole procurement process when we first started this. Now, let's go back to March and even back to February of 2020. And, you know, Sam, Samantha, I'm going to call you Sam, okay? Because we call each other that at the barbecues. I understand that you just got onboard. Patrick, you can probably help us with this. You guys were saying that Homeland Security did not take over in as far as, or be participating in any of the procurement process until May of 2020, right? Who did, who was in charge of the procurement process prior to that, from the onset of this response?
We're talking about procurement and it's in the poll?
No, 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 from about March of 2022, May. Who, or February, actually, of 2022, May.
Senator, if I may, I believe there's litigation that's ongoing at the Superior Court. So we're going to have to decline any comment at this time?
Okay, that's what I wanted to get at. Because initially, the initial process, and Art, don't worry, because you just got on it in July, okay, of 2020, okay? So I don't have, I cannot, okay? Because there are, I know there's litigation, and I know there was reports, okay, that there was some confusion as to who had the procurement authority, whether it was Public Health or the Office of the Governor. Okay, as a matter of fact, I know what the litigation and the reason why is for, for a couple of reasons, okay? You know, and, you know, it's the unauthorized digital signatures and the procurement process. So for us to be able to say that in as far as the emergency procurement, and that didn't happen previously, by that, and it was not, under what authority was that done by? Sam, I appreciate that you can't get, you can't say anything right now, which is, it's going to now. Thank you for validating my concern of not being able to, you know, come to a conclusion or come to some type of decision and start, how we're going to be able to vote with this? Because there are still a lot of unanswered questions. And I appreciate that you can't answer it right now. And I don't expect you to, Sam. Okay, don't get yourself into trouble. I don't want you to get fired again, anyways.
Well, Senator, thank you. Thanks for the vote of confidence.
No problem. Okay, you know, Madam Chair, there's really no sense in me being able to continue on with my questioning because, you know, it is in that area that I want to be able to do this because then it helps to validate, essentially, my need to be able to discuss the termination of this emergency declaration. But we can't get to that because the answers can't be provided, at least at this point in time. And there continues to be some questions that, or some documentation with regards to, you know, whether or not this can, you know, this termination of the emergency declaration, you know, would impede in as far as federal funding. You know, it just goes back to the concern that was raised earlier by, you know, my sister from Paul Gobing. Okay, and as far as what your perspective was. I can understand your perspective being that, based on the way this resolution was basically written, that you feel that, you know, this would take away a lot of the powers. But, you know, the thing is, it's kind of interesting because I brought this up in the public hearing. You're sitting in a house that can be able to change rule, that can change law, okay? That can address the concerns, okay? So while I made that sound like it can't be done right now, what were those things? What are those areas? What are those, what's that language that can be used to make sure, to satisfy, and to deal with the concerns that you have with regards to the loss of funding? Okay, without all the mandates and, you know, continuing to be under the state of emergency? You don't have to answer that question right now because I'll save that for the third round. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Turlahey. Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized. We'll load your time. Senator Sinagastin's time, please.
For 20 minutes? Oh. Oh, 9 minutes, 33 seconds. Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, again, I'd like to thank the panel that are here. A lot of the questions that are being asked is talking about financial. As Oversight Chair on Appropriation, I have two of my colleagues from the other side of the aisle that are members of it. It has to come to my site. I would not be reluctant in calling an oversight hearing to find out where we're at financially and what is the impact. And I think they appreciate that. And all my committee members agree with that. And you can expect that in the very near future. If this doesn't move forward, I'll call an oversight hearing and would ask everyone that would be impacted to please explain. Tell us where we're at, because the budget is coming up. And we need to know this soon, all right? And with that, thank you all for coming and for your time and your patience. And please continue to do the job you love doing, which is staying and supporting the people of Guam. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Richeau.
Just waiting for my time to load. Thank you, Madam Speaker. My question is, would be for the Attorney General, Representative from the Attorney General's office today, I believe it's Stephanie. So my question is, based on the law that enables the termination of a public health emergency, it's 10 GCA, Chapter 19C. It states here that such a termination by the Guam Legislature It states here that such a termination by the Guam Legislature shall override any renewal by Magalhain Guahan, the governor. So my question is, do you interpret that to mean that if this resolution is passed and, and the public health emergency is terminated, does that prevent the governor from issuing any future public health emergencies as it is related to COVID-19?
Thank you, Senator. The understanding is that it would override the renewal, so whatever the renewal exists at the time is what would be overridden, not a future renewal that is not yet in place, if that answers your question?
Well, just to be clear, does it mean she can't do another declaration of emergency in the future for COVID-19?
If the public health emergency renewal as it exists now is terminated, there would be nothing else to renew. Whether she can re-declare is separate from whether she can renew. There would be nothing to renew if the public health emergency renewal in place now is then terminated.
Okay, so could she declare a new emergency? Not a renewal, but declare a new one?
Yes.
So she could declare a new emergency, a new COVID-19 public health emergency?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Madam Speaker, I'll reserve the rest of my time for the, the final round.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator. Senator Nelson?
Senator Nelson, you're, you're recognized, you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Senator Perez, I'm just going to yield the rest of my time to the Speaker.
Duly noted, thank you. Speaker Terlachy, you're recognized.
Senator Sosmasi, Senator Nelson. Thank you again to the panel, I think we've had a very good discussion today, with a few exceptions, but, um, so for the record, at the beginning of the pandemic and at the public hearing, you know, we've asked for any proposals that you think that the legislature should be adopting that will assist us in transitioning out of this emergency and into a more fortified, strengthened public health system. I'm going to renew that invitation again. We've received nothing since the public hearing, and, uh, but, uh, you know, I, I agree with my colleagues that if, that will help us in the long run. I think we all recognize from the discussions that we've had at the public hearing and tonight, and all the oversight hearings that we have had, and even years prior to us even being here, that we have systemic issues that need to be addressed. We have actually had to address those during a pandemic and tried to make them sustainable, and whether we are successful at that or not, you know, remains to be seen, but I think we're all trying to do that, and so I want to thank you for all your efforts in that regard. I would ask that if there are things for this transition into an endemic versus pandemic that we received those prior to the end of this emergency that's currently stated for May 2nd, and, you know, and that, uh, of course, on an ongoing basis. At the, at the hearing that we had that went from 5:00 PM to about 10:00 PM on the resolution, this resolution, we, we heard the concerns from regarding health, the flexibility of the agencies, the ability of the agencies to address needs by, uh, through the use of that tool, which allows waiver of certain laws or rules and, um, you know, quicker licensing, many things that were authorized because of the powers in that, in that Chapter 19. Today, you know, uh, we are focusing a lot on fiscal impacts, yes, but I think we have to, of course, remember and put these all together, right? The answer for us and, or our determination has to be based on all of the answers together, fiscal and health and, you know, services, everything. Those should all be considered. So I agree with my colleagues as well that, you know, we need the answers, the community has wanted these answers for a while, we have attempted to get these answers through different mechanisms, oversight hearings, still not always, you know, that successful in getting all the answers. We've tried through other mechanisms, Bill 11, right, that would mandate coming down here every 90 days in an emergency and reporting why we should continue that, different options, but, um, anyways, I say we take advantage of what we've got before us right now, and that is, uh, you know, some answers, and, um, so I'd like to ask the Attorney General's representative, Attorney Manjola, the, um, as stated earlier, the court has determined that the government has quarantine and isolation powers pursuant to the Organic Act, but the resolution will revoke the powers issued under Chapter 19, which are to the public health authority, uh, and I want to know for, would this, it, it looks like we discussed this all or nothing, it's going to revoke all of the public health authorities' powers under Chapter 19 if we adopt this resolution? And so without Chapter 19, can public health require masks, social distancing, occupancy limits, isolation and quarantine facilities, vaccination clinics and treatment? And can they mandate the testing of incoming passengers to Guam without, if, if there is no Chapter 19 public health emergency?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Outside of the chapter of disease control, which I'm not familiar with, I would say no.
Oh, say that again?
I'm not familiar if there are any specific mechanisms in the chapter you, that was being discussed earlier by Senator Tite agree for disease control, because some of those measures would relate to disease control, specifically quarantine and isolation. So the, other than that, the answer to your question would be no.
All right, and so, do you believe the governor would have those authority, authority to do those without a public health emergency declaration?
All of the powers that are given to, I'm sorry if I'm misunderstanding, but all of, you're asking whether or not the powers under Chapter 19 would exist outside of the public health emergency declaration, and I'm saying aside, what I'm trying to address is aside from what is available, the answer would be no, because Chapter 19 is contingent upon the declaration of the public health emergency.
Okay, and so this, do you agree that, uh, Chapter 19 is where the power to mandate masks, social distancing, occupancy limits, um, vaccination clinics, treatments, um, the testing of incoming passengers to Guam?
That is where the authority comes from? What I was trying to say is I'm not entirely sure if that's the only place the authority comes from. For example, with quarantine and isolation, the governor may have other authorities outside of a public health emergency.
All right, so if I could ask public health if they're aware of any other authority for those types of mandates outside of the public health emergency or Chapter 19?
Right, so, so the only two provisions, um, Madam Speaker, that I'm aware of, is the 10 GCA Chapter 19, which is the Emergency Health Powers Act, and then the other provision that was being discussed earlier is for disease control, but that's under 10 GCA Chapter 3, Article 3, and so that's the day-to-day operations of public health, and so that's where you have provisions here within this article where you could do isolation and quarantine regulations, but the public health emergency also has provisions that are specific to the response effort, where it gives the governor of Guam, and where, that's where there was a question, am I the public health authority, the incident commander, and actually, the way this is written in the section, it says, it could be the Director of Public Health or any person directly authorized to act on behalf of the department, the determination is by Magalhain Guahan or the governor of Guam, so that's provided for in the Emergency Health Powers Act. Uh, but those are the two provisions that we use, ma'am, in terms of our response. Those are the two that I'm aware of in, in terms of disease control and COVID-19.
So does, does Chapter 3 allow you the authority to impose, uh, social distancing restriction, mask requirements, occupancy limits, testing of passengers that are coming in?
Yeah, I don't see that in this provision, this talks more about disease control in terms of, for example, uh, it goes into reporting requirements, it goes into isolation and quarantine, I have access to records, um, if you violate isolation or quarantine, what I could do, but it's the Emergency Health Powers Act in which there is greater latitude, for example, in the Emergency Health Powers Act, let me just get there real quick, I have access to, to and control facilities improperly, generally, the PHA, I can use materials and facilities, use of healthcare facilities, I can control materials, roads, public access, I can prescribe routes, multi-transportation, control limit, uh, ingress and egress, to and from stricken or threatened public area, dispose of infectious waste, I even have a section here, safe disposal of human remains, um, and so these are all the provisions under the 10 GCA Emergency Health Powers Act, and under the title, the Article 3, that's where we have like vaccination, responsibility of, uh, the department to, if we needed to, isolate and quarantine individuals for these, uh, for disease control. And this, and also within the article, ma'am, my Madam Speaker, uh, you know, you have a list of potential diseases here that we mentioned earlier, like measles as an example, as an example, sorry.
All right, thank you. And so again, to the Attorney General, some states were able to lift the public health emergency declaration, it looks like, and yet have mask mandates still in place for certain, like industries or professions? Is there any, if, if this, um, resolution is passed and the Chapter 19 authorities revoked, is, is this type of mandate available to Guam?
I'm sorry, Speaker, I'm not sure, um, I don't know if there wouldn't be any authority for the governor of public health to still implement certain disease control measures. What I can say and what I wanted to clarify earlier, um, what Chapter 19 allows, as we know, is the speed, the ease, the extent at which the governor, the public health authority or the government as a whole can move in order to, um, in order to implement what the mandates are, in order to get the resources to the community for, um, in order to allow the people to comply with those mandates. So I think even if there are, um, other mechanisms in place, legal mechanisms in place that allow the government, the governor or the government to implement those mandates, it's going to be, um, how, when, how, to what extent, and that's where the interaction with, with the Chapter 19 comes in.
Thank you. So I have the same question regarding immunity to medical professionals that's currently provided under Chapter 19, I think, uh, Senator Estevas, you pointed to that. Without the public health emergency, are you aware of any other provision that would allow the government to, or, yeah, that, that would give this type of immunity or that gives this type of immunity? Is that given under the federal, the national emergency?
I, I think that, that question, um, with regard to the PREP Act, right, um, I think that requires and warrants more, more research. Again, it, it wasn't a question that was posed, because it wasn't a consideration at the time, and so it's something we're looking into and considering, uh, in light of Resolution 291, but the, because the initial thought was, as we were ramping down the pandemic, then their participation and overall liability would go away anyways as a result of us getting back into a norm, so, um, that's why I don't have that answer, Madam Speaker. But there was another authority too that I'd like to mention that the governor, more specific to quarantine and isolation, and that was relative to the Organic Act of Guam and the Supreme Court ruling on a 1451G, Section 1451G.
So I agree with you that quarantine and isolation, perhaps, we don't have to worry about, because there's other authority for that, but it's all those other things, I'm trying to confirm whether we have additional authority to do that, uh, without this public health, Chapter 19 in place. And what about, um, so, Ms. Senator Estevas, could you please explain, uh, you talked a lot about getting services and the use of the National Guard and providing these services, and we talked about that they are being reimbursed by FEMA currently under our declaration of emergency, or you got approval from FEMA to get reimbursement of the National Guard during, in their provision of these services. What is your concern if this pandemic, I mean, this emergency ends and a new one is implemented, um, can't we just apply for that type of service again? I mean, that type of reimbursement, yeah.
So, Madam Speaker, yeah, just to, to clear things up, we're actually not reimbursed for them, they're paid directly from National Guard Bureau, who is then reimbursed from FEMA, right? And so what we don't know really, this is uncharted territory, um, just because it, it, it's uncharted territory. I mean, what do you do when you have a funding source? What do you do when you have troops that are on, you know, on the clock and all the funds are flowing to pay them and pay for their services and their insurance and the federal programs that are available for them for continued active service, such as education benefits, health benefits, housing benefits, that have timers on there? What are the ramifications if their order set is immediately cut off by, by a vote of this body and then we reactivate them? It, it, it seems to me that the activation authority on, under 2020 dash 3 goes away with this residue, resolution, I think that's very clear. A new resolution would mean that under a different authority, they're activated, and, you know, the initial thought is you would have to go through the process all over again, because everything starts, every process that we do, all has a source from an authority, right? Because we wouldn't otherwise have the power to do any of this stuff without the executive order. So in regular theory of any type of governmental operation, you always start with the, with the citation of the source, and so if we're talking about removing the source, then we would need to cite a new source, which would then reasonably imply we would have to start all over again. That's the concern. The ramifications, I have, I have no idea, I just know it's, it's going to be bad. I mean, when I say I have no idea, I mean, it's really uncharted, it's unprecedented, and it makes absolutely no operational sense whatsoever to do that to the community and to do that to these service members by treating them like they're some type of light, light switch. The, as efficient as a military organization is, they're not, they can't move, they can't move within a single day in terms of the administrative process it takes to mobilize those individuals on orders.
All right, yeah, I'm concerned that, uh, the National Guard under, in this emergency has been used to help distribute food, PPE, supported the contact tracing and testing, and their medical teams have supported direct patient care, vaccine administration, they've been at the hospitals, that was the testimony that we received the other night, and, um, and that under the Title 32 authorization that you discussed, the state or territory must have an approved major disaster declaration request to FEMA, right? And, uh, and a, and a request to FEMA, and now you said we went through that whole process, we got approved, and we'd, we'd have to start all over again for FEMA approval for, for funding, right? All right, what about, um, the other states, maybe the Attorney General, do you know the other states when they ended their, their state declarations of emergency, are there any other states that are continuing to use their National Guard or, or get funded this way?
I'm sorry, Speaker, I'm not sure.
What about, um, all right, well, I guess any state could renew, or re-issue an emergency declaration, but they'd have to start that process again, okay? On this, on the SNAP allocations, Tess, the, um, Ms. Archangel, uh, so, I think we had heard there was 2.3 million, I thought, I saw that in the governor's letter, but now you're saying it's really up to 20 million, that, uh, we are going to be funded on top of regular million, that we are going to be funded on top of regular, regular benefits, right, provided to the community? These are supplemental?
Yes, yes, Senator.
And these are because we are in an emergency and they require a local declaration of emergency?
Yes.
And?
The, the seven million, that's definite.
Sorry?
The seven million that it's, I stated early this morning, that's definite that we're going to lose. The 13 million is potential for summer PEBT.
Okay. And then, so you said that they've extended, well, they've extended the national emergency till July, and so in theory, we are, could be eligible for these up till July if our declaration of emergency also extend it to July?
An additional one month.
And plus one month, 30 days after the ending of the emergency. Great. All right. And then you said in another testimony that there were 51,000 persons, eligibles, who would lose the supplemental SNAP if the public health emergency ended. Is that accurate? 51,000?
Roughly that amount. That includes also the, an additional PEBT clients.
All right. And then you also said that 30% of Guam's population is on SNAP. Is that regularly or during the pandemic?
Regularly.
Regularly. So during the pandemic, even more, right? Lot higher than 30%? Do you have a percentage?
Because of the PEBT, so even, that's more than that.
The EPT?
The PEBT, SNAP PEBT, SNAP pandemic.
Yes, yeah. What's the percentage under that?
Actually, it's combined, it's combined.
Okay. But so 30% are normal. And this is the thing, when we talk about when, how we're going to get back to normal, when do we get back to normal? Normal's not that great, right? Normal, we're still got 30% of our population in poverty, really, right? They're meeting poverty guidelines, they're eligible for these programs because of that. And now, right now, during the emergency, we've got more people eligible because of shutdown of businesses and all kinds of things, right? I mean, that, the effects of the pandemic, of course, worldwide. And that's what I'm very worried about, right? It's not just that we're going to lose this money, but these are the, these are the people we're trying to help. We're trying to do all kinds of things in here to, you know, affect the cost of living, to affect their housing, their whatever, every part of their living. And this is a big part of it, if it covers medical, it makes them eligible for medical, makes them eligible for food. Those are huge. So for that, of course, I'm inclined, you know, I want to do whatever we need to do to continue those benefits as long as possible, at least till July. I think that's very reasonable, and that's actually necessary. I mean, what are we going to do without that? We, you know, I've heard, you know, we could use other funds, but I'm telling you, that's a desperate situation already. I think it's still desperate, even with the SNAP benefits out there. So I'm very concerned about that.
Senator, we actually have a plan. We're trying to increase the benefits on other programs like cash assistance as well as the Medicaid, so we can shift the cost, so they can, they can use their, their money for food if SNAP's not enough. At least we can pay more on the medical and provide them with more cash assistance. But we are in the process of amending the state plan.
Okay, great. Thank you for that work. I know that, I was going to read the GMH concerns from the other night, from the testimony that night. They said, ending the public health emergency, Dr. Ogun's testimony said, may interfere with FEMA reimbursements for healthcare personnel. So they're able to hire travel nurses, but it's that reimbursement that they were worried about. They didn't think that they could shoulder all of that, those payments and the need that they still have. Removal of the emergency temporary privileges licensure to expedite the onboarding of our critical healthcare personnel. Stopping the differential pay to the frontliners without any transition, this small incentive allows them to keep going. Removing the National Guard medics in our hospital and in the community who play a critical role in patient care. Removing our ability to continue to obtain equipment and supplies to serve better quality of care. Now, some of these, I think we need to fix, just outright, right? For example, the licensing. And so I did talk to the licensing boards, particularly to the nurse licensing board, to see. And so according to them, that their emergency licensing authority extends, you know, through the declaration of emergency, plus 30 days thereafter. So there's a little bit of time, but I asked them, are you ready to, to go in case this gets repealed, right, then, or this resolution passes? Can we continue to license? And I've also, you know, suggested we can do legislation to, to fix our, we, we have emergency licensing laws already in place. Apparently, they're not as fast as the temporary work permits that have been granted throughout this pandemic. And so we need to make those two programs look more like the emergency temporary permit, right? Just faster. But they've done it really, they've done a lot. They said they've got about 25 CNAs pending exam and, and, because we were told that there was a backlog, but it looks like they're going to, so I, I, I am hoping with all this discussions that we've had, you know, from the public hearings and today, that, yeah, those emergency licensing are going to be available to, under regular licensing, right? Like the speed of that and the ease and the convenience for, for the agencies like GMH. But we just have to all work together to make sure that that happens. Let me just see if there's anything else. So you've testified already today. I had questions regarding emergency procurement, but I, from what I've heard today, with the exception of what happened in the very beginning, all the rest of the procurement has been through regular 5GCA authority, not necessary under Chapter 19. So that's relevant for, for purposes of repeal. And then, all right, let's just talk about public health a little bit more. Just, so you, you have plans, we need an endemic plan, and we need a plan for a potential additional surge, right? Another surge. So we can, is it safe to say that other states, when they end their health emergencies, they've got plans in place in case there is a surge, and they've got that capacity? And what we're worried about is we don't have that capacity yet. You're hoping June? The, the nation is hoping July, at least right now, right? And that, that every state and territory would be up to speed by then to deal with their own surges and deal with their own endemic, right? That the, the virus continues to go around the community. So you said part of the plan is to test and treat, right? You want the two clinics to be able to do that. They're not ready yet. You want to permanise, right, the bureau, I guess it is, you know, testing. I know we talked about this early in the pandemic, how you had received a grant in order to stand up that bureau. We also have, we've seen during the pandemic, services going out from public health over and beyond the regular services, including the, the, I want to call it homebound, Operation Homebound, that type of excellent programs, if they're, you know, managed well and continuous and, you know, closing some gaps. And we need to continue to close all those gaps. But yeah, I, I, I worry about that. But and, and I, my only concern is that I am willing to say, yes, public health needs more time. They need more time because these services are critical. They're still critical. We're still, you know, under threat of surge. And if we are under surge, we, we may easily become, overwhelm our hospital, right? However, yeah, it, it does seem to be taking a while, right, for these services to become institutionalized, for this shift to become permanent. And so, yeah, that's my, that's just a concern I'm going to share with you, that extending public health emergencies for us to get our act together, I don't, you know, I don't agree with that. I agree if it's very clear that we are doing that, and this is just a matter of time to, to complete it. So I don't know. Senator Stevis, could you talk to that? You're the incident commander in charge of getting public health into that type of capacity?
Yes, thank you, Madam Speaker. No, I do appreciate those points. And I fully recognize on its face, it looks like there has been a lot of time that has passed. But from the perspective of the frontliner, there hasn't been. What we've experienced since, I want to say really late July, has been a nonstop operational phase in response to two back-to-back surges that, that really, in many cases, nearly broke our healthcare system, right? And without kind of getting personal here, but to see healthcare workers, healthcare professionals breaking, Madam Speaker, breaking to the point of they're about to get up and walk, right? Or seeking behavioral health services, that was our reality. So, you know, yes, there has been a significant amount of time overall, but from, from, from my position as incident commander and our ability to take the lessons we learned in the various stages, in the different phases of COVID that, and its variants that we have seen, to take all of those and turn that into a surge plan that accounts for the different scenarios, and to turn that into an endemic operating environment that public health can sustain in a, in a reasonable manner without excess overtime that this body may be liable to pay once federal funds start to leave, or with the, with the personnel available to do that. I think one important caveat is, we kind of look at this and think it's, it's, it's a money situation, and I understand that concern, but it's, it's, it's really not in terms of the public health side. It's not purely a financial situation. The misunderstanding with public health is that public health has this large pot of money that it can do whatever with, and that is not the case. There are dozens of grants with very specialized purposes, right? And I, and I know you're familiar with this, but for the benefit of the public and the record. And these grants have very specific purposes. And so if I have to have a nurse, and they're hired under this grant to do vaccines, I can't throw them to do testing. I can't throw them to do monoclonals in, in like 99% of the time, because the federal funds that pay for it, if we're talking about judicious and not wanting to pay, pay back that, those funds, we have to stick to those priorities. And so those are the, excuse me, those are the challenges that we're, that we're facing. Now, I'm not here to complain about the challenges. I have a target, I have a timeline, and I have a goal. But in terms of the time it takes to do this, Madam Speaker, you know, and I say this with all due respect to everybody here, you know, GovGuam is not the fastest in the best of times. I would not expect us to be any better in the worst of times, truth be told. Government moves at the pace it moves. Now, my commitment, and I, you know, I say this comfortably, and I've said before this body and on the record, is that I will move as quickly as I can, I can, to get us into a steady state. And for my, my mission to be over and my job to be complete, right? And in this, knowing that we didn't skip a step, right? We didn't cut a corner because that guilt ultimately will, will fall on, on, on me and my colleagues that, you know, that I work with. So we haven't had that much time between surges. We can say, if we want to, if we consider our low status as when the Omicron surge had ended, that was about two weeks ago, right? And so for the longest time, you know, we've had staff actively engaged, six, seven days a week, working crazy hours. And we all know, and we've heard from different, different agencies, sometimes overtime just does not cut it. There is real-life burnout. The people that are working these operations are human. And, and, and I know you understand that. And so, you know, with that, I'm not asking for more time. I'm just saying I will move as quickly as I can to, to make this happen.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much. And I appreciate that the frontline has been frontline for this entire time and that, right, we're asking them to shore up a health system while they're on the frontline. And it's, I, I very much get that. And I think, you know, I'm trying to be patient, understanding all of that. I think our entire community is. And, but I think when we want to bring the entire community along in that type of an effort, we absolutely need full transparency. And that's, that's, I would say, the effort here. It's for full transparency. I would ask you to continue with all the information that you can provide. And I guess, you know, for all the panel members, you know what the community's been clamoring for? We want to know why, right? They always want to know why. Why is it taking so long? What is taking so long? What are we waiting for? What is, what are we looking for? What is our, our, over, over, you know, our maximum capacity at the hospital always? I think that's always very helpful. What's our maximum capacity at the hospital and where are we at on a given day? And how quickly can that turn, right? I think you, you can't stop with that type of information. But there's been lots of periods where this information has not been available to us despite our efforts. And so I just want to encourage all of you, we need to bring the community along. We need to bring them along for the duration of the pandemic, which right now ends on May 2nd. That's a couple of weeks, right? And the national emergency goes until July. We have, you know, some representation that public health might be ready by June. We need to know about all the other agencies, right? The hospital, are we ready to go, right? To, to operate without waiving other laws, other rules, right? And making permanent what we might need permanently. And that's why I'm asking you again, if there are things that you need permanently. Like I, I recognize that emergency licensing might, you know, that those, whatever's making it slow versus the emergency permits needs to be fixed, perhaps. That testing needs to be available for those nurses now that are ready to be tested. And I think they're working on those things. So I can see the efforts, but I'm just saying transparency is really the key. We want to trust, but I think more than we, the community wants to trust, and they want to trust all of us. So they want to trust us, that we're going to demand from you information. And yeah, so everything that you can provide, I think is only going to help you. So again, so May 2, the current public health emergency is slated to end unless it is renewed, right? And I think, so I support all the efforts that, that, you know, for increased transparency. I, I support the efforts of your departments to shore up and to continue to fight off any surge. But, so I just think we need to continue with these things. But thank you. Thank you to all the panel members. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senator Duñez, did you have any further questions at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair, I reserved my time. I did reserve my time, so it's starting again.
Okay, yes, if we can correct the time.
Madam Chair, I want to start by saying that I fully understand and appreciate the frontliners. My wife is a frontliner. She's a critical care nurse for over 30 years. And my wife and I were actually COVID roommates in August of 2020. She's not only a frontliner, but contracted COVID, and we stayed in our house for 20 days, being serviced by our family. So I want to let you, each and every one of you know, how much I absolutely appreciate frontliners, because I experienced it, and I experience it every day in my household. And I cannot tell you how much I am thankful for that. Mr. Stevis, I, I need to ask you a direct question on this particular issue. You mentioned treatments. Of course, it's very important. So my understanding, and I'll ask you directly, is the federal assets deployed to assist with vaccination and monoclonal administration, are they still working with GovGuam?
Today's their last day. I didn't renew based on our demands being down. So that's step one of our drawdown.
Step one of the drawdown?
Phase one, yeah. Federal resources, then local external resources, then internal, so public health, like overtime, non-COVID personnel, or non-grant funded personnel, and then regular operations is the, is the progression of our scale down.
Did we defer any of our April monoclonal or any other treatments to any other jurisdiction?
Yes. At the request of Region 9, because our numbers looked good and we had our April allocation, and we, we still had significant and we we still had significant amount of our March allocation. Based on our trends, we offered or we we answered the call to provide treatments to our neighbors in America Samoa, who was going through a very bad surge, and they used up their allocation. So there wasn't just this magic supply of monoclonals. They had to, the states got what the states got. And so in order for them to deal with their surge, we did donate our our April allocation.
So we deferred our April allocation?
Correct.
Even though we're in this current emergency? Even during this current emergency? Mr. Stevis, Senator, who is in charge of? Who is in charge of the Recovery Task Force?
So I'm the incident commander. I handle response, I mean, response activities. So in terms of the Recovery Task Force, I don't think they've met in in quite a while, and I'm not a part of a part of that. I'm focused mainly on response efforts.
So many of my colleagues here have been talking about the transition, the off-ramp, the change. And so on the record today, we're stating that, can I ask a direct question? When was the last time the Recovery Task Force met?
Senator, that's that's not my task force. I I don't know. That's the governor's task force. I I don't know when was the last time they met.
Is there anybody on the panel that can respond to that question? When the last Recovery Task Force meeting was?
I'll take that question, Senator. At Executive Order 20-13, establish the recovery office. Prior to that, I don't I don't believe there's any task force that was stood up. So in establishing our organization, that's one of our goals in the future is to set up all these different task forces. That's up to the governor to do that. But we need to, of course, write recovery plans. We have what they call recovery support functions for public health and economic housing and so forth. And none of those plans are non-existent right now, including recovery task forces.
So it's your statement? Because it's there's been statements and releases and other representations from the governor's office that there has been assembled, I believe, over a year ago, a recovery task force.
Right, right. She, in the economic area, she had economic diversity task forces. Right? She's got that task force. And she's also had the, oh, gosh, other task force. I believe there was one for for the tourism area. That was another task force. And of course, she established a task force with the medical complex, address building that. So those are the ones I'm aware of.
Well, you're not aware of any meetings that they've had recently?
Well, they've had meetings in the past, but they haven't had meetings recently.
Okay.
Senator, that's that's a non-governmental task force or committee. Right? So they, that's not necessarily within our purview unless we're instructed to to participate directly.
I realize that, Senator. And sometimes the non-governmental are the best ones that should be meeting. Because as you-
No, no argument there?
As you put on the record, Senator, government does not move with alacrity. And so my question is, we're all talking about recovery. We're all talking about moving out of this. I would think that the private sector in particular has, you know, very, very strong input in terms of how to move forward on that. Stephanie, I have to go to you. So it looks like we've established this as an all-or-nothing provision. But you've you've established also for the record that a new emergency can be implemented, just not a renewal once this is terminated. My question is, as an all-or-nothing, is there any provision that we could not establish a timeline in this particular resolution?
Do you mean can the resolution identify a timeline by which the public health emergency would be-
Let me give you a hypothetical scenario. Say, for example, we amended this resolution to state that this public health emergency shall terminate in 30 days.
I'm admittedly not sure we're able to say that you cannot. But the initial reading is that the declaration by the legislature has to terminate the existing public health emergency upon majority vote. So that would be at the moment, at the time of the, at the time the legislature votes to do so.
But there's nothing that the Assistant Attorney General, the Attorney General reads in this resolution, and I will talk to our legal counsel about it as well. There's nothing in there that states it is immediate or it cannot be amended to have a time certain.
There's no language in the law that says that, no.
Senator Duñez, thank you. We're going to, since we're on round three, we're going to excuse the panel and we will continue with round three. But we'll take a one-minute recess to excuse the panel.
Madam Speaker, I had I had reserved my time for during round two.
Yeah, you've you've got your time left, but we're in round three.
No, but I need to ask the panel just two more questions. That's why I reserved my time in round two, so I could ask questions.
Well, you reserve your time, but we're in round three now. So the rule was-
No, we came, the chair came back. The chair came back to me. And that's what, if you go back to the tape, I asked you to-
All right, well, I'll allow the two more questions, please. And then we're going to excuse the panel.
Yes. Thank you. Public health, during this public health emergency, is there is there a capability because of this public health emergency, particularly to chemically induced abortions? Are they allowed under this public health emergency?
Sorry, Senator, could you repeat the question, please?
Because of the public health emergency, is there any provision that allows for chemically induced abortions during this public health emergency due to the declaration of public health emergency?
The public health emergency in response to COVID? I have not seen anything that refers to chemically induced abortion.
Does it waive any, does it waive any provisions in terms of the ability?
I I would have to review, but off the top, I don't recall any provision that waives the chemically induced abortion. Is that what you're asking?
I had a, I had a question from a from a medical doctor, so I needed to put that on the record. So your statement under oath is no.
My statement is I would have to review, but my recall is I don't recall seeing anything on chemically induced abortions being waived. I would, yeah. I don't know if there were any executive orders that waived that and that was even done through an executive order that was issued prior to me coming on board. That's why I would probably want to talk to legal and find out if there's any provision that perhaps wasn't existent, is no longer existing, and I can get back to the to the body, the speaker, perhaps?
Right, because under this, just for the record, under this medical professional's understanding, and that is the reason for the duty to report under this current situation, that if it is and it has been waived under the public health emergency, it would mean that that particular telemedicine and other opportunities are allowed for because of the public health emergency. And that, could you please review that and get that information back to us?
Yes, I will. I will definitely consult with legal and get back to the body on chemically induced abortions under the public health emergency.
Correct.
Is that correct, Senator?
Correct.
I'll leave it at that, Senator.
Thank you, Art. My final question to DOA. Under this current public health emergency declaration, is the open government law currently suspended?
Again, that's a legal question, but I don't believe so.
So can you also provide that information to the committee by seeking legal guidance?
Yes, sir, but please understand that I'm not the guardian of the open government law. DOA does, has no jurisdiction over that particular law.
I understand that, but you are DOA. You are the Minister of Authority for Funds. And if the if the open government law has been suspended, it would apply to you. It'd apply to anybody under the public health emergency in terms of for the purposes of procurement. That's just a fact.
Are you making that request with particular reference to procurement?
Yes, I am.
Okay, then I will get back to you.
Thank you very much. Madam Speaker, thank you for the time. Situs Massey.
All right, so we're going to take a break, a one-minute recess just to just excuse the panel.
Madam Speaker, if I may, I have a request. Since Senator Duñez was allowed to ask questions in this round, I have just one question I'd like to ask the members of the panel before they're dismissed.
There are no floor amendments that have been loaded to the drive. So what we will do is we will just proceed with round three. This is the last round. You can use all your available time. And you can, if the panels can stay, we'll just allow whatever questions with your remaining time. And this will conclude our committee of the whole. So Senator Duñez, would you like to continue or are you?
No, Madam Speaker, I I I think I've determined that there's way more questions than answers. I will close when we get to the resolution and make my recommendations in terms of what to do with the resolution.
Thank you. Senator Ada, you're recognized. Is there any time left for Senator Ada? Okay, Senator Brown. Time, is there a time? Senator, I mean, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
I don't have any more questions, Madam Speaker. I just want to thank the panel for being here all day and answering all the questions. Senator Massey.
Senator Perez. Senator Taitigui.
Waiting for my time, Madam-
We'll wait for your time to be loaded.
Oh, thank you, Madam Speaker. Title 10, Chapter 3, Article 3, on Section 333. It's a restricting entry into Guam. It talks about the the governor's authority to create an executive order to declare a public emergency. So if there's any doubt that whether we can or the governor can, if this resolution should pass, that the governor can go under this chapter, particular chapter, and declare an emergency. And it basically narrows it down. So Art, if you can look at, read 333 when you have an opportunity, I'd like to hear your feedback on it after that. And Madam Speaker, also with DOA, Mr. Byrne, according to Chapter 5, where it talks about procurement, there is a requirement that, let me pull this up. Certified copies of the Certificate of Emergency by the Chief Procurement Officer, Public Works, head of purchasing agents or designated either officer shall submit prior to award to the governor and the Speaker of Lesa Turan a contract award under Certificate of Emergency pursuant to this subsection. I have not seen, to this day, any report submitted to the legislature for certification on emergency procurement. I've I've just talked to the clerks. I've had my staff look for it, but nothing has been submitted to the legislature for this certificate of emergency. Can you tell me where I can find those?
Senator, that requirement was first required under the new procurement law that was, has now been codified. And as as Senator Stevis says, we haven't had any emergency procurement. So there wouldn't, there wouldn't be anything to file.
Not anything in 2021?
Not anything since the law became effective.
Okay, but what in 2021?
Not anything since the law became effective.
I I asked you, do you have any procurement, emergency procurement certification that was done in 2021?
The the law became effective-
I know when the law came into effect, Mr. Burns, just answer the question.
Senator, I'm trying to.
Senator, it was, the question is very simple, and stop the time because it's obvious he's not getting it.
Senator.
There is a certificate requirement. I understand it just became law when it comes to any kind of emergency procurement. So there has been some emergency procurement in 2021. And I'm asking if that, those emergency procurements have been given to the legislature for us to see?
I don't know. I'll have to look.
Okay, that was my question. It's as simple as that. You don't know if if any report has been submitted to the this body for 2021?
Since the law became effective.
Or or even before the law was affected, is my point here. I'm just trying to get to the point where, do you give us information whenever there's an emergency procurement that you've been under Chapter 5 designated in 2021? But you're saying since the law came into effect, it's not there?
That's correct, because it wasn't required before.
So where can I find this, these reports on all your emergency procurements in 2021?
Well, I will advise.
Okay, so I would have to FOIA for it, basically.
I I will tell you when I find it.
Oh, where can I find it?
I will tell you when I've researched it.
Oh, okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Sorry. It's this mask, so. Madam Speaker, you know, in closing, I believe Resolution 219 urges all of us to consider a broader issue, which perhaps is a true and more serious public health emergency. That is, the health of our people. COVID-19 has demonstrated, at least to me, that medical issues such as diabetes, hypertension, cancer, and other diseases remain the bigger issue that will, if left untreated, adversely impact our hospitals, healthcare providers, and private clinics. We have an artificial economy with over $1 billion worth of federal taxpayer funding pandemic assistance. And Guam needs to plan for a different trajectory beyond this pandemic. Guam must develop more education and training programs focused on equipping our economy and our workforce in order to meet the new norm that that is very visible to our island. With Resolution 219, perhaps the governor has the opportunity to declare on paper or through effective policy a public health emergency aimed at helping our citizens to properly treat and address our individual medical issues for the long term. So I ask this body to please start working on transitioning out of this public health emergency. Be prepared. But don't forget the real issues behind our 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 community, as I mentioned earlier. I appreciate each and every one of you that are here today and spending your time with us to provide information that is usually never given to us by the administration. We have to sit in front of, have you come here, sit in front of us and give us information. And it's so disheartening that a lot of the answers we were trying to get from you, you still can't answer. We talked about $7 million. It's actually test, if you think about it, we get a 30, 30-day delay if we were not to have a public emergency. So we are already in April. That means if we go to May, we still get that leeway for 30 days. And then it's June that starts. But we know that in July, most likely, this will not be extended because what's happening in the U.S. right now? Everybody is turning to to providing a new norm and building what this pandemic has done to our community, not just on an economic level, but on a spiritual level as well. And I hope, Madam Speaker, Madam Chair, that the questions we had wanted or the answers we wanted from our questions that were not answered, I hope that this panel is not going to just walk away here and never give us those those answers. And I I'm positive with your your guidance and your leadership, Madam Speaker, that we will get those answers. And I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Taitigui. Senator Blas, you're recognized. This is your third round.
Thank you.
Can we load Senator Blas's time, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, I'd like to ask everybody in the panel, can anybody give me a basically a listing of all the mandates that exist now based on all the different executive orders that have been put in place? All the mandates, all the all the community mandates? Stop my time. Thank you.
Senator Blas, you're asking for a listing of all the mandates through executive orders? I don't have a listing this afternoon with me. We'll have to come, it's not something I'm compiling, but we can request our team to work on that.
Madam Chair, I've got an amendment that's that's being proper and being loaded up, and I can ask for recess.
Is it being loaded or prepared or what state is it in?
It's right now with legal.
All right. Okay, one-minute recess? One-minute recess? All right. Okay, one-minute recess. One-minute recess.